Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session for Wednesday, June 12. Okay, I'm gonna try to take three. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the work session for Wednesday, June 12. Thank you all for being here. I want to apologize for the delay, but our closed session just went over just a little. Dr. Martin and Dr. Gabriel will not be with us this afternoon. So with that said, may I have a motion to approve the personnel docket?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel docket.
Have a second? A second? Any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Basin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to 4.01, Gifted Education Plan Updates. Dr. Burdson?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, Carla Stead will come forward to provide some updates relative to the school division's gifted education plan. There's no need to vote. She's just providing updates.
Good afternoon, evening. It's somewhere in between. All right. Madam Chair Buffalo, Superintendent Dr. Burdson, members of the Norfolk Public Schools School Board, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the implementation of the second year of the district's revised local plan for the education of the gifted. So I'm gonna begin by revisiting some of the big ideas that served as a basis for these revisions of our gifted services. Key components of Norfolk Public Schools' gifted plan include implementing inclusive practices that emphasize talent development, along with providing all students, regardless of their identification, exposure to enrichment and other levels of gifted pedagogy. We truly believe every student deserves the opportunity to have their talents recognized and nurtured to achieve their true potential. Highlights this year include the expansion of our emerging scholars' talent pool, with focuses on recognizing potential and developing strengths. Emerging scholars are students who do not yet show readiness for gifted identification based off the first-grade universal screener, yet they scored in the top 15% in their respective schools. So these students are clustered in their general education classroom and pulled weekly from grades two through four by their school's gifted resource teacher for enrichment and exposure to advanced-level lessons. They are then automatically referred to be retested for gifted identification during the fall of their fourth-grade year. So this coming school year, 24-25, will be the first time that we will be retesting our fourth-grade emerging scholars who started grade two to see if they now show readiness for gifted identification. So in school year 22-23, this was the first year that the department identified and provided pull-out services to 151 second-grade emerging scholars. This is the group of students who are going to be retested this fall. In school year 23, this last one, 23-24, we saw an additional 147 identified emerging scholars who received services. Now we have them in grades two and three. Last February, first-grade screener identified an additional 156 emerging scholars. So in total, in the coming year of 24-25, there will be 398 active Norfolk Public Schools students in grades two through four who will receive services from their school's gifted resource teacher in addition to the school's identified gifted students. It is also noteworthy to see that the demographic makeup of our emerging scholars more aligned with the district's. We will now turn to Norfolk Public Schools' annual gifted referrals, which is the process that parents, guardians, teachers, students, or others use to request certain K-12 students be assessed for gifted education services. So this year saw a significant increase of 25% more students across the district being referred, and we saw higher percentages across most student subgroups. Out of the total 704 students referred this past fall, 231 were found eligible to receive gifted identification, approximately 33% of the students who were referred. In addition to our referrals, Norfolk Public Schools administers an annual universal screening using the COGAT Abilities Test, also known as COGAT, to cognitive abilities tests, also known as COGAT, to all our first-grade students. This research-based best practice allows us to cast a wider net and expand access. This is also when we identify our emerging scholars' talent pool students. This graphic demonstrates the upward trending in most student demographics that score who scores as a result of the screener allows them to move forward in the identification The emerging scholars' or talent pool average COGAT screener scores also continue to tick higher, demonstrating that having those full-time GRTs pushed into K-1 classrooms continue to have a positive effect. The Arts and Sciences Enrichment Program continues to offer students opportunities to explore interests, foster creativity, and promote their social skills. This year, 38 schools offered 104 programs to help make learning more relevant, meaningful, and, dare I say, fun for both students and teachers. Transitioning now to Norfolk Public Schools' middle-school gifted program, known as the Young Scholars. We saw a significant increase in applications this year, with 189 received from 33 different elementary schools. Students from 22 of those schools ultimately enrolled in the program coming this year. A slight decrease from last year, however, there were school applicants who qualified but did not choose the Young Scholars as their first-choice program and therefore did not enroll. The current demographic makeup of the Young Scholars does not yet match the division. However, we will continue our efforts to improve diversity. For example, we have increased the number of seats from 20 to 28 students starting this year, and the application interview process is under evaluation to ensure it is being culturally aware, both in its questioning and scoring rubric. Furthermore, we want to continue to expand awareness of the program, and we will continue to present information both to all our gifted fifth-grade students and their families throughout the district, and assist them not just understanding the Young Scholars program, but with the overall middle-school application process in general, so that they understand all the other opportunities available to them. The partnership with the William &amp; Mary Center for Gifted Education continues to be fruitful. We have developed a robust online repository of gifted cluster teacher training modules, which equips educators with tools and strategies to more effectively support our gifted students as well as identify gifted characteristics or potential in students who might be normally overlooked. 144 teachers across the district have logged in and participated so far. In addition, this year Norfolk will send 65 seventh-through-tenth-grade students through the campus of William &amp; Mary for a free two-week STEM leadership summer camp. This is known as Camp Launch. This is specifically designed to provide economically disadvantaged students opportunities for enrichment, personal development, and exposure to rigorous academic instruction in a university setting. Finally, Norfolk Public Schools is proud to share that its Grow Your Own Gifted Resource Teacher Program has graduated 13 newly endorsed teachers through our partnership with Regent University, providing the district a qualified pool of educators ready to advocate for and provide services that best meet our students' unique needs. And with that, I thank you for your support of gifted services at Norfolk Public Schools, and I'm ready to take questions. Okay. School Board members, you've heard the presentation. Mr. Clanton, got a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I recognize every year that you've come back and about the expansion and being more offerings at the elementary school level. I do wanna go back to Slide 10. Young Scholar Program applicants by school. So 33 schools. Applications received, but only 22 schools were actually enrolled?
Enrolled this coming years.
Okay, so there were students at 11 schools that are not gonna be in the gifted Young Scholars program?
Correct. Some didn't apply at all, and some chose a second or third choice. So they might have qualified for the program, but they decided to go into a different program.
Got it. That was my follow-up on that one, was was there any correlation? Was there any potential barriers where students? Because I'm interested as to what those 11 schools are, and if there are any potential barriers that are preventing or, you know, why students wouldn't accept this opportunity and some others. So it's just, not saying there's anything wrong there, but I, it just jumps out at me. We had such a large increase in applications, and I guess, is that application a application that's submitted by a parent, or is that recommendation coming from the school?
It's coming. It's, the student can help, and they're supposed to write the answers to the short answers, but the parent does an online application.
Got it.
And then we take the application, and it's all criteria-based. So we're different than a lottery. So we look at criteria, and they meet the basics, and then they go and do an interview, and then we take the cumulative score, the application and the interview, and it's really, we take, and it used to be, like I said, 20, so the cutoff was a little harder, so with 28, we can accept a little bit more.
Got it. Okay. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Ms. Basin?
Thank you, Ms. Stead, for the, for the information and presentation you provided. So in your talking points, you answered a couple of my questions, but one that I would like to know a little more about is how are, so this, you know, you talk a lot about how many students were identified and participation in the emerging scholars, and then if I heard you correctly, so this next year will be the first year that we're retesting in fourth grade, right?
Correct.
And so since, and we began this program, the emerging scholars, is it been, is this the second year?
This is, we just finished the second year.
We just finished the second year. So how, I guess, how is that impacting identification?
Right now, we're not seeing a huge uptick. We are seeing scores go up. We're seeing COGAT benchmarks go, scores going up, and more students qualifying to go to the next phase of identification. So that 85% is the benchmark, where if they meet that, then they can move on to further processing. So those scores, we're seeing those scores go up a little bit more for that exposure, but the emerging scholars, this is, this fall will be kind of when we see where the metal hits the floor, I guess, and see if it's been, if it's, the exposure has really made a difference. And either way, even if they're not officially identified, they will still be tagged in synergy to see if that exposure will help them take more honors classes, maybe get into more programs, have more access to other opportunities they might normally not have because they weren't given the exposure to these critical thinking opportunities and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. And I asked that question, and I know you probably won't, but the iDashboard that is on MPS's website, you know, it showed, you know, a trend of declining identification, so I was just curious if this was, if we're seeing the impact just yet?
No. And of course, I kind of expected it because we, we were lowering the bench, we kept lowering the benchmark to try to help with diversity, but it really wasn't, we just were lowering the standards. So we just kept the standards because we believe every student can read those standards. But we've, we believe that by giving them the exposure, they're gonna get there. So I'm optimistic that we'll see an uptick in the fall, I mean, after this fall.
Thank you. Could I ask one more?
Yes, of course.
My, my next question is around, okay, so, so we've talked about identification. Now how are students doing who are identified? Are we, are they performing at a level that we expect from, you know, our identified students, or?
That is something I'm working, I'm getting reports to see exactly. Before, we weren't tracking necessarily gifted students and how they were doing on testing and so the standardized tests. So now we're able to see that.
Okay.
We've been starting to notice that. You know, I don't wanna answer because I haven't done any analysis, but I would certainly, that's something we can certainly add into the report next year, and it is something that we're starting to track.
Yeah, I think, I personally think that would be great, you know, to, to go beyond, you know, just how our students are participating in the programs, but also how they're, they're doing academically would be, would be helpful.
And we're starting to survey them too, to try to get a qualitative response as well. So this year, we did a survey to parents and students to kind of get a snapshot, and they, you know, the kids answered, they're, they're great, you know, they love their teachers, they love gifted services and so forth, so that's always positive. But we know we're not hearing from everybody, so.
Well, thank you, and I have one last question. You talked about cultural awareness in the interview process for young scholars. How has the identification process changed to be more culturally responsive and sensitive?
The entire?
Yeah, for identification in general.
We've had a lot of training, so I've been working with William &amp; Mary about that, and so they provided a lot of, you know, here's what it looks like in our underrepresented population. It manifests in different ways, and that is, we just, it's a lot of training and getting in front of it. So our EL population, our SED population, our low socioeconomic, they're gifted. It just doesn't come out what, what the typical stereotypical way that people expect. So we just, getting the word out, more training, spreading the gospel, you know, just getting it out there every day, and the more, and we're, we're doing that slowly but surely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, also thank you for the presentation. On the slide where we were discussing the demographic breakdown, I didn't see anything that shows non-socioeconomic, non-SCS and SES. Do you, are you all looking at students by economic status as well as by the so-called racial groupings that we have?
So I personally don't have that access. I have to get the special. I know they do at the end of the year, and the end-of-the-year report, it shows the socioeconomic status, so then we have a snapshot at the end, that it would be something I'm interested to look into.
Yeah, I would encourage that Ms. Basin mentioned the dashboard, and I was just going through it, and so oftentimes, what we'll see across the country is, so you have gaps by the so-called racial groups, and then you have significant gaps when you look at economics. So I think considering our demographic profile, trying to see what we are doing intentionally to support that access, and to what extent, as Mr. Clanton was mentioning earlier, about the schools that weren't applying or accepting, whatever the case may be, whether or not we're seeing some nexus between not only the racial grouping, but also are we finding the schools that are more concentrated in poverty are having less access or less acceptance into the program? And if so, then what type of supports do we provide in order to, to address that? By the way, I don't know, did you, did you, did you get the opportunity with Dr. Burdson, did you all see the letter from the Gifted Education Advisory?
Today, yes.
Okay, so.
Dr. White?
Yeah, so I appreciate GEAC for sending the letter. I also appreciate, I guess they're trying to mimic the board in terms of having SMART goals.
Yeah.
And I, I pulled up the plan because I was looking for it, so thank you, both of you, for mentioning that this was an update, because I, but I pulled up the plan again and was just looking at some of the goals in the original plan. As the, as the staff, are you all providing support to the GEAC in their efforts to address SMART goals, or how's, how's that going from the interaction between the, the staff and the GEAC, where the GEAC is trying to monitor progress in their role as, as advisory committee?
So my role is liaison. I'm there, I answer questions. It's really, we definitely, I have to, we remind them, this is for the district, you know, some come with different agendas.
Hmm.
But generally, everybody wants the same thing, what's best for our kids. When we looked at the, they asked, where do we start? I said, let's look at, I gave the suggestion, let's look at the objectives and programs from our local plan, because that's really the nuts and bolts, you know, why are we here? Why are we doing this? And we have a couple of, like, more than a couple of professors that like to look at numbers and use data, which is great, but they, they wanted to, well, there's no SMART, you know, how do we measure this? And, because they wanted to be more succinct when they sent you, you know, we don't wanna just say, we wanna see more representation, well, how much represents, we want something doable. So, so I helped them in that, you know, encouraged, gave them whatever information they had. We went, I told them how we came about the local plan, what our goals were, and then we met with groups. I had GEAC gifted resource teachers come every week, or we met, well, every month, not every week. At least two or three would come and give them what it's really like, you know, what they're doing in the schools, different demographics, you know, how it's, they're handling the interviews, how they're handling trying, the students that don't score as well, some of the schools from certain areas of codes versus other. So they're getting a more representative view, they're kind of getting a better understanding. So at the beginning of the year, they started with one ideas, and then towards the end, they started to get a better grasp on what they wanted.
Yeah. Well, I just appreciate that they're doing that and appreciate whatever support that you and others are giving them and doing that. I think it will, you know, as, as we are monitoring, especially around some of our non-negotiables, I think is probably where it will fall, being able to know that we have some alignment between the, what the board is doing in terms of what we're monitoring and what our advisories committees are doing, that kind of support that I think is pretty exciting personally. So I appreciate you all doing that.
Absolutely. We shared some of the strategic plan, we talked about the data honoring goals for gifted education, and so we're trying to take the village, so.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms., anyone else have questions? Ms. Basin, you have one more?
I do, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I, I guess, you know, when I was asking about how they're doing, I think that's where the connection is, like, those, those monitoring tables in, in the strategic plan and how that connects, I think would be great to see. But my, one thing that I thought was interesting, on Slide seven, it was like a reverse trend among Asian students. So we're, we're seeing, each year, we were seeing this increase in eligibility, but among Asians, we're going in the other direction.
And it's not so much we're not purpose, it's so, it looks like we're purposely not identifying, and that's not it at all. It's just we're, we're doing a better job identifying different subgroups, and so when you take the whole percentage, it's just, that's a balancing act. Some are gonna go up, and some are just naturally gonna go down a little bit. Because right now, we, we follow the trend when it comes to the ratios of your typical demographics and who's identified, who's not, and gifted has a long way to go, but we're trying, we're making strides, which I like, but what, so instead of doubling, like, Asians, just the Asian population in general, two to one, where they're identified twice as much as their population are, and a lot of times it's misinformation, stereotypes. They're hard workers, and they, not that they're not gifted. And so as we're changing the mind shift to what gifted really is and what it, not necessarily, people are starting to look for different characteristics, and so as we're trying to trend upward in other demographics, some are just naturally gonna have to come down to reach that. Does that make sense, 100% kind of?
Um, not really.
I want somebody else to draw on this.
I didn't get process what you said, but yeah.
Yeah, I do.
I, I think because our population of Asian students is so small, and when maybe one year, I'm making up numbers, you might have 10 that are identified, then the next year maybe five, that shows as a significant decline. So I think that's more of it than anything, because the population is already so small, and every child counts, so even one child can make a significant difference with the data.
Sure. Yeah, and our, I haven't looked at what our enrollment is for, by subgroup, so to your point, you know, I mean, for all I know, you know, the Asian population has decreased.
Yeah, we could certainly look at all that, but.
Yeah.
Thank you for helping me.
Yeah, so thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to 4.02, Monitoring Calendar. School Board goes two, three, and four. Dr. Poe is at the podium. Otter?
Good afternoon. 2.1, yeah, I, I can do it, Ms. Tanner, with the mask up here. I got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Buffalo, Dr. Burdson, members of the board, members of the community watching. I'm here to present six measurable goal updates tonight. And you'll notice when I present, I'm gonna take out the repetitive words that were across some of the measures, so that we're not here all night talking about the same thing over and over. So we'll start with Measure 2.1. Goal two, just as a reminder to the community, is around the percentage of students reading honor above grade level by the end of the third grade as measured by the reading SOL test, and we want it to increase from 45% during SY 2021 to at least 75% during 26-27. So Measure 2.1 specifically looks at our PALS data. So the, the measurements here is, we want first-grade students to move from 60.7% in the spring of 22-23 to 65% this past spring, and then for grade two, 58.6 to 63% was our goal. And I do wanna point out that we have some nice green boxes up there, and that's always exciting, and we've, we've been fortunate to see that over the past three years, actually, with our early literacy data and all the work that we're doing in that, in that realm. So what does, what does the data show us? Both grades one and two met the spring target for student proficiency and for students identified. In grade two, the percentage of students identified decreased from the fall to the winter, but remained relatively static from winter to spring. The percentage of students identified from spring 22 to spring 24 has steadily decreased, which is good. Remember, if you're identified in PALS, that means you're identified for needing interventions. In grade one, although the goal was met in the spring, the percentage of students dipped a little bit from fall to winter, and that's likely because the sudden increase in rigor in the test, and we talked about that during the winter, and, and, you know, the increase of letter sounds that are no longer a part of identification, and the requirements are similar from winter to spring, so then we start to see it level out some. So what's going well? From winter to spring, the percentage of students proficient increased by almost 10% for grade one and 2% for grade two. From fall to spring, the percentage of students proficient in grade two increased by 3.3%. And more than half the schools met the spring target for student proficiency in grades one and two. What's not going well? Although the students identified in grade one decreased from winter to spring, the target goal was met, however, the percentage of students identified in the spring is slightly higher than the percentage that was identified in the fall. But I would like to remind you, with grade one specifically, that assessment does get more difficult, and it's common to see level or even some dips in, in identified students. So we did stay pretty close to level. Years past, we've seen many more students identified at the end of the year, which is not the direction you wanna go. So even though it was not going well, it's still, we're on a good, a good pace for that. You'll notice this had some pretty colors of, of green and yellow. Tried to, tried to point it out as, as best I could. The yellow highlights represent past actions that we stated we were to take, and then the green highlights are some responses to those actions. So for PALS specifically, the first one was around addition to facilitating data review, meetings with PALS early literacy tutors, and building reading specialists. The English office utilized a reading specialist to provide differentiated coaching for PALS tutors, and the English office logged over 80 school support visits focused specifically on coaching and monitoring of the PALS early literacy tutoring initiatives. So we were in schools talking about the data on a regular basis. Division-wide professional development for K-2 teachers emphasizing evidence-based literacy practices based on walkthrough data. An increase in evidence-based literacy practices were observed in K-2 classrooms across the division, although more work does need to be done. We did notice that. And teachers are implementing phonics routines with greater fidelity than in previous years, so we'll start to see that growth. Then the third one was reading specialists are undergoing extensive training through the, the Virginia Literacy Partnership, which is a part of the LA as well, and there's a specific Canvas course designed to strengthen reading specialist knowledge, and then in the fall, our teachers will start this practice as well. And some feedback here is that we've seen reading specialists developing common expectations and deeper understanding of evidence-based literacy practices, that they're then able to, to promote and highlight at their own schools. So we're starting to see that more frequently across all of our schools, because again, thanks to the work the board's done in the past, we do have reading specialists at every single elementary school, which means we're over the ratio of what the state requires. So we're in a, in a good spot with that, and we're able to really do some of this work more thoroughly. And you- And you will see repetitive in the next steps, because as we're capping out this year and getting ready to go into next year, these are the three main things. So with all the literacy ones, our next steps are going to be the same. So I'll, I'll discuss them this time, and I won't repeat them in, in the future ones. But the three main things, the English office will facilitate professional learning, provide instructional coaching support, and monitor the implementation of the new 2024 English standards. Just as a reminder, I, I know you guys are well aware and up to date on this, but we do have new English standards coming into play next year, and the high possibility of a new system of accountability as well. So it's going to shake, rattle, and roll everything around here next year. But, but we're prepared for it, we're ready for it. The second thing is the English office will support professional learning, provide coaching support and monitor the implementation of the high-quality instructional materials and the evidence-based literary literacy instruction. And as you're aware, we just, you guys just approved the purchase of the materials for the K-2 implementation and 3 implementation. We've already had that in place, so we're, we're in a good spot. And then finally, the professional learning around instructional coaching and monitoring the implementation of Lexia, which again, we've had for three years now, but the state did choose it as the statewide product for literacy support as well. So again, we're in a really solid place for our, our tier two, three support with Lexia, as well as the way we've integrated into tier one instruction. So I'll pause for measure 2.1 before we keep going through, if you'd like, so we can do some questions now on each one.
There any questions? 2.1, Ms. Basing?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Poel. And first, I want to say I really appreciate in the monitoring reports, the, the what's going well, what's not going well, and the, the depth of the explanation. So I, first, I think we're moving along on that. So my question is around, so it's good to see, you know, progress being made, but specifically for our Black students or students with disabilities and our ELL students, what, what are we going to do to kind of accelerate progress among those groups? And specifically in the strategies, like what can you tell us more about?
So we will be continuing next year with the schedule where we're doing specific tutoring during the school day. So based on data throughout the year, based on the Lexia data, that's, that's pretty immediate throughout the year, where teachers get feedback based on the PALS and STAR and the through-assessment data, and then unit assessments as well, to be able to target any student of, of high need. We're also focusing more on some positioning with our, our L family engagement specialists as well, so that we can move some from Title I to non-Title I, so we have more support in non-Title I schools as well. So items such as that, and, and also with the Virginia Literacy Act, there's a requirement for curriculum training and HQIM training with our ELL teachers and ELL specialists, so that takes place as well in, in the work to make sure that we're hitting those populations of students.
Thanks, and my other, my next question is, so if I, I think I heard you correctly, we've been seeing this progress in the PALS data for the last three years. So looking at, well, and I might be jumping the gun, but I wanted to connect that to the third grade reading proficiency and where we, where, where, could you connect that, you know, and what we're seeing in the third grade reading proficiency?
So we, we have a lot of discussions around that. And, and we're not, based on the STAR data, we're not seeing that come to fruition yet. But we're also still just barely below where we were pre-pandemic right now. So we're just seeing that high growth early, so that I think we're not seeing losses in third grade that we might have been seeing without the gains that we're making in the early literacy right now. And I truly believe, based on looking at data for this year, next year, we're going to start to see this come to fruition in, in third grade with the, just the data points we've seen. Because also, these students that are finishing second grade, for the past three years, we've had PALS tutors in place in K-1, 2 for them. So they've had more intensive support for three years, so their growth even, we should see them growing into the level they need to be in third grade. That's really the, the data point we're looking for as well. But yeah, we have those discussions about, you know, when's that data going to manifest into the third grade reading? And, and then we really start to think, well, if we hadn't have done this, and if we hadn't have focused, and, and really with the board's approval on those PALS tutors. And having, I think we have 82 PALS tutors throughout Norfolk right now. And having those tutors in place with small group and one-on-one instruction has really helped make the difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I echo supports for the, for the report and the progress. My question, I was sitting here, I know in our, there was, that we're, there was conversation about switching from PALS to this Virginia language literacy screener. And so I guess I have two questions. One, can you just talk about what that looks like? And number two, do we have targets that follow under the, I don't know if they call it vowels, I don't know what.
It's vowels, yeah.
Vows, whatever it is. Because I guess right now, what we've been monitoring would stop, and then we would, we need to be able to pick up on the Virginia language literacy screener. And I just like to get a sense of.
Absolutely, so would I.
Have you already done some? Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So, Mr. Jordan, that's a wonderful question. And I've actually had conversations as, as recent as today with Greg Williams, our statistician, on, on that exact thing, about, you know, what's this transition going to look data-wise? So assessment-wise, I just want to say PALS was developed in the 90s, and vowels has been redeveloped, and it's, it's a lot more fluid on, on what we're really looking for on effective reading practices. So it's time to change, clearly. But at this point, there's no clear pathway of comparison between PALS and vowels scoring. There were, I think, 10 pilot divisions across the state, and they might be looking at some of that. But to this point, there's been no reports on it. So it could be, you remember the shake, rattle, and roll, this is the rattle part. It could be that we have to just set a new baseline next year with where we are and how we're moving forward. And, and I'm hoping not, but I truly believe, and you remember, I think we put a little red line on the, you know, in a red note in there saying vowels is coming. But it is, you know, that's, the V L A has a lot to it, a lot to it. And that's one of the things that's going to change.
Yeah, so I guess my question for you, Dr. Birdsong, or Dr. Poel, or collectively then, as, as we consider our, our movement towards the, the goal, are you all likely to come back to us with something different to monitor in terms of our progress for third grade literacy? Or we just, do we drop PALS? I mean, I guess we, we kind of need to figure out what that might look like in a short period of time, so that we can have an idea of, I guess, one, what we should measure, and then whatever time it may be required for you all to calculate what that new baseline would be if we're no longer doing PALS.
Well, we're certainly going to do that. We thought that this summer that we would give you a V L A update anyway. And so along with that, this would be a, a part of that update. And so we would hope that you would trust us to come up with a baseline for what we need to look at, as soon as we get more information to establish that, and then talk to the board about what the goals look like. Essentially, kids are either proficient readers or not. And so there's no other way around that. So we'll still be monitoring that closely, but it will just be with a different assessment tool.
Yeah, and just for the board, I was just really talking about the fact that we're monitoring this progress, we're monitoring PALS. PALS is going away. PALS was one of the predictors for how we are seeing progress towards, towards the goal. So we have to be able to work with Dr. Birdsong on what, how it will change, but it's really up to her to come back and tell us, tell us what that is. But under some requirements that we're required to have in terms of evaluation and all that, we need to at least get a sense of what it may be, even if it may take a while for us to determine what it shall be.
It won't be perfect the first time.
Well, nothing, no, that's fine. No, I just wanted to, to raise it for us to have it on our radar screen, that's all.
Ideally, we have that first bump a year, reset baseline, and then move forward with it. I mean, because the vowels will be good data, I'm sure of that. It's a, it's a great assessment, but we'll absolutely work on having something.
Thank you, that was my only question.
Yes, next report, Dr. Poel?
All right. All right, so 2.2, same goal. This measure now is on STAR for third grade as, as we go through. And the goal here is for proficiency, which is the adder-abover on watch, to go from 58.7% to 63% this year. And for the, the urgent intervention to decrease from 26.6% to 23%. This, this data, not quite as pretty as far as the targets, but as far as the scores, we, we did make some headway with the scores. So what does the data show us? Grade three missed the spring interim proficiency STAR target by 5.4%. An increase by 0.4 from winter to spring. And the urgent intervention declined by 1.3%, but is the same as spring 22, 23, and missed the target by 3.6%. And the student, the percentage of students proficient increased for most subgroups from winter to spring, except for our Black subgroup and our students with disability. So what's going well? There was improvement from winter to spring, third grade results from 23, 24 for most subgroups. And there was a 1.3% decrease for urgent intervention from winter to spring. So we did see a decrease there. 13 of our schools were either above the district spring 23, 24 target for either overall proficiency, urgent intervention, or both. What's not going well? A grade three STAR did not reach the expected growth in proficiency from the 23, 24 winter and spring administrations, and the percent proficiency is lower in spring 23, 24 than spring 22, 23. And the percentage of students on urgent intervention is the same from spring to spring. ELL and SWD subgroups have the lowest proficiency for third grade reading based on STAR results. And for the previous action steps, again, I'll just review the ones that haven't been reviewed. First is the, the division-wide PD for grade three teachers emphasizing science-based reading, research, and evidence-based literacy practices. Based on walkthrough data this spring, an increase in evidence-based literacy practices was observed in grade three classrooms across the division. And that's us getting ahead of V L A, really. For targeted coaching support, teachers were receptive to coaching support. More time is needed to see the full impact that, on, on that, though, because the coaching of the science of, of reading is new. Coaching and monitoring tutors' implementation of evidence-based literacy practices. We've seen better alignment of instructional interventions to evidence-based literacy practices were noted. However, still more work is needed to see the growth. And increased number of students receiving one-to-one tutoring using a data-driven foundational reading skills curriculum. If you recall, I talked a little bit about Ignite, which is a program the state had out, which is for a small population. This year, we were able to have 568 participate in, or there were 568 students participating in one-on-one tutoring. And next year, we already have 450 seats approved from the state that the state would be paying for, for that as well. Increased opportunities for all instructional staff to engage in data coaching. During the division-wide PD days throughout the year, Lexia training was offered as a professional development opportunity. And all elementary schools had one building-based professional development meeting focused on Lexia, in addition to additional meetings using the Lexia data and how to use that in the classroom. And in year three, we've just seen much smoother implementation of that product throughout the division. Increased intensity of data-driven teacher-led small groups utilizing Lexia. And here's where you can see the use in the classrooms. A significant increase from Lexia lessons and skill builders delivered this year as compared to last year. There were 7,976 Lexia lessons delivered as of June 5th compared to 7,332 for last year, which is a little above where we were last year. But here's where the big one is with the skill builder lessons. This year, we had 7,295 completed compared to 1150 for last year. So really saw where that growth happened with Lexia and, and being used more often. We had increased instructional walkthroughs focused on monitoring implementation of high, high-intensity tutoring models. Reading specialists across our division conducted an audit of their building's high-intensity tutoring model with the goal of identifying gaps in the model. Plans were adjusted accordingly. Walkthrough documents were created and shared to monitor implementation of high-intensity tutoring. And if you recall, we started that right mid-year when the All-in came out and, and added that half-hour chunk of time for it, so that the reading specialist kind of started it quick and then reevaluated it through the year as we went through. So some next steps, and again, these are the same next steps since their literacy, so there's no need to reread them for you. So I'll pause here for questions you may have on measure 2.2.
You've heard the report, are there any questions? Mr. Clanton?
Yeah, just one, I heard you mention the All-in, and then you may have mentioned this before, but I know that, that funding from the state, so is that two-year funding or?
Three.
Is it two-year funding?
So it is, it is three. This is year one of the three-year funding. And then we'll roll a, a good amount of it into next year to be able to still use for the intensive tutoring process. And then if we're able to, to fund more tutoring with any local funds, or like we can still use S R funds through September that, that we've budgeted for, then that saves All-in funds to roll for a third year. So we have up three years to spend it. And then hopefully, the B D O E will say this has been great and give us more.
Thank you.
Ms. Basing?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Poel. So can you, so you did talk about Ignite program in previous meetings. And can you help me understand, so there's 568 students participated, I guess, this year, right? And then next year, there's 450 seats. Is that based on funding, or is that based on criteria?
It's funding, based on funding. And even though we had 568 students participate, we didn't have 568 seats. It's there, in the year, there might have been a student who just wasn't going or transferred out or didn't need it anymore, and we were able to change over. So even though we have 450 seats, next year, we may have 900 students at the end of the year based on, you know, how, how the tutoring process works. But that is one-on-one for 15 minutes a day for each of those seats. So 450 students at a time will have that in-depth instruction beyond the classroom instruction on specific reading needs for them.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, there could be greater than 450 seats that need that additional.
Correct.
Tutoring. So for those students that are not getting the Ignite one-to-one tutoring, what are we doing?
Absolutely, so those students are getting, we have our UI instructors in there. Buildings have, they have budget to hire tutors, individual tutors within the building as well to do that. And that's where we have that 30 minutes of time built out. So they still have intensive tutoring. It's just not with the Ignite program. We take on the Ignite because that just adds what we're able to provide to our students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Jordan?
Can we go back to page two for a moment with the chart? Think I'm on the right one. Is that the right? Yeah, that's it. And on the, the, the graph, I'm sorry.
Oh, the graph, okay.
So, so we have one there for spring, school year 22, the 57.9, the spring school year 23, the 58.7. We were targeting about, I guess, our target growth across the chart is about 4, 4% each year. And then this year, we're actually slightly lower, I guess about a point lower, than where we were from spring of school year 23. So I guess my first question is, when you look at the, the fall, the fall results and the winter results, is that a typical up and down, or a typical graph that we may see? Like we could have seen the same thing in, between school year 22 and 23, is that typical?
Typically, we'll see, we'll see a higher growth from fall to winter than from winter to spring. So, you know, you, it does, it's not a consistent growth throughout. Usually, you'll see a higher growth at the beginning and then a, a slower growth at, at the spring. But, you know, typically, we wanted to, to continue going up. So even though we only had a 0.4 gain from winter to spring, you know, we want to see more growth in that.
On, on the, on the spring side, so at least, you know, we don't have five years, but we're looking at one, two, three years, if I'm looking at it correctly.
You are, yeah.
We're seeing about a 1% to 2% growth each year of progress, whatever the appropriate terminology is. We were anticipating 4%. This would now put us. This would now put us, if we kept the same approach, the next for spring of school year 25, we would look to be at, I think, 67%. But our, our patterns aren't showing, showing that. So what is it that, I know you went through the what's working and strategies, but in order to really get us to see as these second graders become third graders that we'll be looking at next year, other than what you've already talked about, is there anything that would give rise to us seeing the, seeing the growth pattern moving from the 1% to 2% to 6 and 7?
Yes, so I think with, again, with what we've seen with our PALS data right now, we're seeing our, each year, our second graders are getting stronger. And to see that transition to third grade, and I think with the new standards, the new curriculum, the new emphasis on the, for us, it's not necessarily new emphasis on science of reading, but for the statewide, it is a new emphasis. But some of the PD that's coming out that's required for all of our teachers, I think we'll start to see that, that, that change move. It's a hard predictor, though, Mr. Jordan. And even this, you know, we're looking at the STAR results, you know, transitioning that to what is, what are the SOLs results? You know, which we still don't have all of those in yet. So, you know, really, when we have a chance to really dig into our final SOL results at third grade to see how are they comparing with STAR and are we seeing what we need to see or not seeing? That's, that's where we have the discussions and where we start to break down the data further and really look at, you know, we've done three years of Lexia now as well. So looking at that Lexia correlation and seeing what can we do stronger on a weekly basis even and looking at data that way.
I'd like to ask you a follow-up question. So in essence, I feel like you're asking, or this is what I'm hearing from you, is that based on our trend data and the direction that we're going and looking across the three years, we will likely try to project out using the same approach or pattern now so that we can meet the end goal. But it doesn't look like we are getting to that goal as quickly as we need to get there based on what our target is. And so what do we do? Is that what you're basically asking?
Right, because in the, what we, what we projected out with the targets was, you know, 4%, 4%, 4% each year. So I don't know if it's in the fourth year that you were anticipating. The targets don't suggest that we are anticipating some exponential growth that we're pretty much saying we were expecting about 4% each year. So we're not seeing that yet. And so I was just trying to get a sense of as we, and really, it's more so on you than on us, but in terms of, you know, what are the targets telling us? Are the targets realistic? Are the targets?
That I was going to say next.
Are they not?
Are they realistic?
Do they need to be more stretched? I don't, I mean, our goal is to, you know, we've set a goal. We've set a goal around reading, and we're clear about what we're trying to achieve. You know, it's your, your expertise and advice that's saying to us that at least as of this point in time, STAR would be a good indicator of whether or not we would get there. And I'm just saying, just what I'm looking at, I'm asking you, what does it say to you? Because I know what it's saying to me, but I mean, I don't have the expertise to say, based upon what you've been describing thus far, that because of all the investments that's been going on from kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, that maybe you all are anticipating a jump that needs to be reflected in the target or something else. But I just wanted to raise that because otherwise, we stay on this path where we're looking at 4% each year. And if that's where we need to stay, then that's where we need to stay. But that's what caught my attention when I was looking at the graph in terms of the, the spring results and then also the in-between to see if something should be different between fall, winter, whatever it is that would show us that, let's say, in, in school year 24, 25, we right now project that we would be at 67. And right now, we're at 57.6, so that is almost double what, you know, that would be needed to get there. And that's just on the target. But it's quadruple what our trend is showing us at this time. So I don't have an answer, but I just want to tell you what I'm observing.
There's no magic bullet, so we don't.
Yeah, we just need to.
We just have to stay focused.
Yeah, we just need to.
And be intentional about our strategies.
And making sure, right, that they are going to produce. Because that's what this whole thing is about, is to give you all the flexibility to make course corrections if required or to come back to us and have a conversation around other things that you may need in order to reach the goal.
Yeah. And we believe, and based on the data, that our tutors are making a significant difference. I can't even imagine if we didn't make those investments for that one-on-one attention for kids that need it.
And I'm sorry, the other question I had was, and I think I mentioned this to you last time, Dr. Pol. So you've integrated this, this school data in here, the school charts? It's nice to see, but I don't know what you're really trying to, I don't, I don't know what to do with it because.
I can happily remove it.
No, no, no.
Because it's just extra work, really. It is.
No, I appreciate it as a recognition of what schools are doing. And it's just me, I don't know how others feel. But unless there's something that, that some schools are doing that other schools aren't doing, or if it's resources, it brings up other questions that I don't know if it ties to what you've, what we really are monitoring.
I hear you.
And so if it's there, I'm going to ask questions about it.
Fair enough.
But if it's not there, then less is more.
To be fair, that's the balancing act that we have to think about. And so we want to be able to provide you the data that we believe you need to make, you know, informed decisions. And trying to find the balance between what you're going to need and then what you're going to ask for. So we try to anticipate what you're going to ask for, things that you've asked for in the past, which have resulted in these school-level data charts.
We keep trying to, I'm keep trying to transition away from yesterday.
And we're happily, we're happy to do that.
I'm just simply saying that if I look at the chart and it has, and it has 13 schools that were whatever, I'm just telling you, for me.
Good driven, I understand.
I've been wanting to peel back the onion and figure out what's the school thing telling me. But that's not what we're, we're not monitoring school-by-school performance. We're monitoring overall performance.
And it really, it started off as, as the transparency part. And so you know where we're really putting our resources, right? Because we're putting on the resources of the schools who have the lower success rate, because we do that equitably, not equally.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Basin, then Ms. Stone. Well, let Ms. Stone go first. Stone, then Ms. Basin.
I just wanted to say that I actually appreciate having these on here. For me, it's nice to be able to have it because if you come down the line and say, we've seen this one school that's been an urgent, for the last several cycles. I already have that information. I've seen it. It's something I've been tracking. So I don't feel a need to ask every single time I see that this school is still on here. I see this school is still on here, but at least that transparency I appreciate because it, when you come to me later and say, this is one school we know is ongoing, it's not a surprise to me. I knew that the whole time. And just having that there is, I actually find very helpful. So if you want to just ignore it.
No.
I actually like having it there. It helps me anticipate what I might think.
Just from a conversation standpoint.
Yeah.
If, if, if that chart was a part of the goal one and it's saying that because of this school performance around STAR, it's likely to impact ultimate school accreditation, it would make sense to me because the school performance would be tied to a school measure. But I think if you put a school measure and mix it with an overall measure, then what does it? You know, I'm not saying it should go away. I just don't know if it belongs on this, this report, so.
Basin?
Yeah, so ironically, I was, I was going to state the same thing. And, you know, I think about, like, questions I would ask if that weren't there and would be around, who's struggling more than others? And while you're giving a whole school-level representation of how our schools are doing, you know, I think of the students within those schools. And yes, it brings us down to asking other questions. Like, I want to know, like, what can we replicate in the schools that are doing well or exceeding targets and what's happening? So, you know, I do have questions, questions like that. But I do, for the same point Ms. Stone made, you know, I think it's good for us to see the pattern. And I know I'd be one of those that would be asking for.
Absolutely. And just, you know, I've heard the word replicate a couple times. So just to let you guys know too, so we work with principals and with Summer Leadership Institute. We encourage them to do specific presentations based on data, improvements and successes they've seen so that we can replicate more.
And principal meetings.
Yeah, I was, Dr. Kimsey and her crew have also done a great job during the principal meetings to have principals share and so that we can replicate what's going on across the division. And then we do the monthly reading specialist meetings for the same thing, so that we can share what we're doing at all of our schools.
Okay, so we like the schools, Dr. Pol, so Mr. Jordan, it's three to one.
I mean, it's the board, but I'm just, I, when the, when it comes up and we end up having the discussion about what data do you want and what data do you do not want, I want the board to own its responsibility. That's all. Okay, so.
Yes, three to one. So we're going to move on to 3.1, Dr. Pol.
Yes, ma'am. I already have it pulled up. All right, so moving on to goal three, which is where we're looking at students in our black subgroup, reading on or above grade level as measured by the SOL reading test. Will increase from 43% during 2021 to 75% during 26-27. Measure 3.1 focuses on at or above or proficient for the STAR reading assessment. And this year, the goal was to go from 41% to 49%. And the data, the data shows us we did see some growth, but we haven't met the target that we set again, which is reminiscent of the last conversation we just had. But although the performance of students in the black subgroup on STAR reading improved from fall to winter and from winter to spring, it's still below the target. But we saw the line, how we wanted to see the line this, this term, that's for sure. We saw it move up and up. Although the percentage of black students proficient is nearly 6% below the target, it's increased by over 2% from the 22-23%. So we saw it go up and improve over last year. So what's going well? The black subgroup had a higher percentage of proficiency in spring 23-24 when compared to last spring and when compared to spring 21-22. And 19 of the 37 schools exceeded the spring target. What's not going well? The black subgroup proficiency level is 5.7% below the target for 23-24. And the trend for the black subgroup is flat when comparing winter to spring, 23-24 to fall and winter, 23-24. And then 18 schools were below the target. A few of our previous actions. The English office developed instructional roadmaps for teachers in grades five through eight because, you know, we, last year's data showed some struggle in middle school level to support unit planning. And specifically, the integrated reading and writing assessment that was new this year. And all schools utilize the materials prepared for the IRW. So our central office specialists work with the school-level reading specialists, and all schools implemented those products. The English office collaborated with various instructional staff members, including reading specialists, to analyze division and school-level data and to identify priority SOL strains and to plan interventions. And for that, the schools then developed and implemented 45-day intervention plans at the end of the year. And the English office provided instructional resources to support those identified priorities by each school. So it wasn't just blanket, here's what we need to do. It was school-by-school and their individual plans and the support that we gave them. Reading specialists and instructional coaches are leading similar sessions at grade and teacher levels to ensure the right instruction at the right students at the right time. And schools developed and implemented the 45-day plans again with the resources that were provided to really show that we're targeting the specific student and their needs based off of their data. And then the English office continues to provide professional development for teachers and building-level administrators focusing on online tier-one instruction, student engagement, and small group intervention. And that's, you know, small group, we talk K-12 now. It's not just an elementary thing. It is a K-12 thing, small group. Walk-throughs and collaborative planning sessions indicate an improvement in tiered-one instruction. And small group intervention is an area for continued monitoring and growth, especially at our secondary level. And then again, for the, for the reading portion, the, what's going on next is similar to the, to the other reports.
You heard the reports. Go forward. Have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Basin.
Thank you again. So as you said, you know, the strategies are similar as what we've seen in other reports. However, for this subgroup and being intentional with what we're doing, what resources, what things, you know, strategies we're using, what, what, is there anything that we can support you on so that we can accelerate the process? Or put greater, you know, I'm going to say, greater focus if that's what's needed?
So these, the ones, the strategies I highlighted were actually, these are different than earlier ones because these focus more on the individualized coaching and looking at data more specifically, since this, this goal is specific on subgroup data. I think the support you give as a board, you know, with, with, with what we have, with the tutoring funding, with the software that we use, with the, the professional development that we provide is strong. I think as we go through VLA, I'll be honest, I'm not sure what I'll have to ask for as we go into that or what we will have to ask for as we go into that, because it's a different monster. And there's some really great aspects to it, but it's, it's coming at us fast and there's still items we're waiting on from the VDOE of what specific things are going to look like. But we're prepared for that. We've talked about some different scenarios. Mr. Brady and I specifically have talked about different items within professional development that are required that might have to be outside of the work hours that we might have to transition some of our all-in funding to help pay them for because we're already overworking them. So items like that might come up, that we might come to the board and say, just please know that we're transitioning this kind of funding around to support our teachers in this effort.
Thank you. And the one-on-one tutoring that we're doing, and since you did put the schools here, so when, are, are we fulfilling the one-to-one tutoring in the schools that are exceeding, I guess, that are below target, I mean?
So we purposefully staff our tutors at a better student-to-tutor ratio at our high-need schools than we do at our more successful schools. So it may be where one school has two tutors and a school the same size that has a higher need might have five tutors so that we can make sure that we're meeting the student needs. And that's the case with, with all of the funding for extra remediation, extra help. Is we, we do that equitably based on student need, and we also do it based on staffing need.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I need some remediation. So can you remind me again with the, with the STAR reading? So our goal we have is black subgroup reading on or above grade level as measured by the SOL reading test.
Right.
And the SOL reading test is administered to what, what grade levels?
Three through eight and 11.
Three through eight and 11.
And this goal captures all those grade levels.
And then STAR reading captures all those grade levels as well?
STAR captures three through eight.
Okay, so, okay, so.
So correct. So our 11th grade data will, will, for SOLs, will be in addition to the data that we have here.
Okay, so we have 11, three through eight. So now, now I'm going to double down on my earlier comment with the schools being in there. So we have three through eight. We have elementary, K8s, 3/8s, and the middle schools. But ultimately, we're just trying to see if all black students that are taking that STAR assessment at whatever grade level that they are combined are showing progress towards, towards our targets. So I'm not going to go on the school thing, but similar to the previous report. targets. So I'm not going to go on the school thing, but similar to the previous report, we had, so our target for this year was forty-nine percent, which based upon the, where we were last year, that was, we were looking to go from forty-one to forty-nine, and then currently then go nine point, nine percentage points for next year from forty-nine to fifty-eight. So if collectively we're actually at forty-three point three, then that means, at least as of now, we would be looking for fifteen points from where we are now to where we are targeting next year. So with that being the case, tutoring and all the things that, that we're looking at, are there one or two areas that are the biggest leverage points that would allow for students across that wide span of three through eight and eleven to actually hit this fifteen-point target? Middle school would be the?
Yeah, and the continued use of our support blocks in middle school, you know, tutors in those support blocks and more focused approach on the data in those support blocks. And then not during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but during the, and you'll hear hopefully about this, this summer when we do an update on, at VLA, but during twenty-five, twenty-six, the vowels will also go through grade eight. So it'll give us a different data point at that point as well. But middle school, I think, is where we have some of the biggest bang for our buck in, in moving this data, Mr. Jordan. And we, and I, to be honest, we're seeing some of that movement in middle schools. We are starting to see it.
So what you have here in terms of what's working well and next step, next steps, do all of these kind of apply to middle schools? Or are there certain areas, especially around the next steps, that really give that middle school focus?
No, they, they all really, they all really apply, really mostly K eight where these really fall because we have similar software products and similar instructional patterns in that level. And the VLA also focuses K eight. So they really support K eight, what we want to do. And also, you know, we're, another thing where the board has really been progressive with the administration in Norfolk is, we, I think there's only one middle school right now that's not staffed with a reading specialist. So our middle schools also have reading specialists. So we're able to, you know, use that knowledge base, not like a literacy coach or something like that, an actual licensed reading specialist, which is ahead of when the VDOE says we have to have them in there. And we've had them for years now. So really utilizing them in a different way and doing the same science of reading professional development with them, we'll start to see a difference in reading instruction. Because traditionally, secondary, we read to learn. We don't learn to read. But having reading specialists in place and really focusing on the science of reading, we know the importance that we still have some that are learning to read that are in our middle schools.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, Dr. Paul, three point zero, three point two.
All right. So three point two, again, same goal here, but now we're looking at the urgent intervention side of moving students out of the bottom tier and up, which ultimately will make a bigger, bigger difference. And again, we're seeing the graph looks exactly how we want it to. We're not quite at our target, but we've seen, we've seen good movement out of urgent intervention, how we, pacing wise, how we wanted to see it. So what's going well, or what does the data show us? Although the students in the black subgroup performance on STAR is improving from fall to spring, the urgent intervention prevention percentage still doesn't quite meet the target that we, that we did set. What's going well? The percentage of black students in urgent intervention has steadily declined through twenty-three, twenty-four school year as we just saw that parallel line to the target. And the spring percentage for twenty-three, twenty-four is lower than the twenty-three, twenty, or twenty-two, twenty-three percent. So we saw improvement from year to year as well. And those doggone schools, twenty-one of the thirty-seven schools met the winter administration target for urgent intervention with students in the black subgroup. So we saw a good majority of our schools moving students out of the urgent intervention. What's not going well? The percentage of black students in urgent intervention is thirty-six point six percent for the spring, but the target was thirty-four percent. So we missed it by two point six percent. And eight schools have at least forty percent of the students in the, in the black subgroup in urgent intervention as well. All of the stated previous actions have already been mentioned and talked about, so there's no need to review those again as well as the next steps. These get quicker and quicker as we go on.
All right. Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Well, maybe I'll start with my continuing theme around where we are and where our targets are taking us. So I won't go into that again, but I think we just need to be mindful of what our targeted progress is and where we are while also appreciating the, the progress that, that may be occurring. Just, just out of curiosity, so on this report, you, you referenced the schools and you tied it to the winter administration where I guess in this, where we are now is dealing with the?
That, that is a typo and I sincerely apologize for that. That should be the, the spring, that should be spring. I am so sorry for that, Mr. Jordan.
That's good. I had it circled. I just wanted to make sure that.
I apologize that that slipped through.
Okay, all right, no problem. I appreciate that. That actually makes me feel better. And then, yeah, there you go. On the status of previous action steps, and I think we talked about this before, but where you're identifying the five hundred sixty students participating in Ignite and tutoring and four hundred and fifty seats are approved, and forgive me if you said this already and I just missed it, is that, does that cover all that we really need?
It doesn't and it's budgetary. It's what the state's able to, to give us because that's a state-run, that's a state-run support.
So if the, if the administration had its, didn't have that barrier, what would be the number of students that, that you would want to be able to have in this one-to-one tutoring that you feel is helping to drive results?
So in this specific goal, Mr. Jordan, I don't have a number for you, but I could tell you right here, I would want thirty-six point six percent of our students to be with that because those are our students following an urgent intervention who would need that type of support.
And you're saying that there's no local support that we could do to provide you what, what you are?
It comes down to the amount of seats that Ignite has. Since they do fifteen minutes of one-on-one tutoring, they've allotted us the four hundred and fifty seats because we were early to ask. But they can only manage up to X amount of seats and they've maximized that out across the state unless they can hire another hundred tutors to help. Even it just comes down to a, a ratio of how many folks they have to do the one-on-one tutoring because it is live with a person. It's not AI. It's solid instructional practice.
And you don't, well, I'll ask it another.
We begged, trust me.
Yeah, I was going to ask. You begged, begged Ignite or you begged VDOE?
So Ignite is who we go through because they're the ones who know how many seats they have. And we, we went up a little bit, up a little bit, up a little bit until we got to the four fifty and they've really said every single seat is full. But they know that if a division says, oh, we don't need ten of our seats, then we'll get four sixty. You know, because Lisa Nash has done a great job of developing that relationship with them and, and making sure our reading specialists are working with the students to get them into tutoring because they also require a seventy-five percent attendance rate of students in their tutoring session. So really doing all that work where some other divisions haven't been as strong has gotten it to where we get this allotment of seats even. So we're, we consider ourselves fortunate to have the four hundred and fifty right now. I appreciate the offering.
Yeah, I just, I mean, if we, if it's, we know where we are, the state knows where we are. And if we're saying that there's something that produces results for students, it seemed like it would be a, a good place to, to ask. And if, and if there was something that administration wanted to do and the board also supported that, we can force them to tell us, no, that they don't think we should have additional resources to benefit our children.
And now is also the time with our UI tutors, where maximizing our budget as much as we can for them because now's the time where they're starting to shuffle around to where other divisions might not have funds, where if we have that we can get more UI tutors too because they're, they're very helpful to.
One last question. Under next steps, are, are these steps new or is this just a, a focus, a continuing focus of what we'll be doing year to year? Is there anything in here that's like?
So these are new, but they will be year to year because they match tightly with the VLA.
All right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah, I just, I just want to be sure I understand this because I asked earlier about the five hundred and sixty-eight students and the four hundred and fifty. And so I'm reflecting on what you just shared with Mr. Jordan, well, share with all of us, but in response to Mr. Jordan's question. So the four hundred and fifty seats, so those that would normally, like if you could provide it to all, my understanding is that they are still getting one-on-one tutoring.
Correct.
So that thirty-six point six percent is still getting?
Correct. They're still getting support. It's just not through Ignite.
It's just not through Ignite. So then, the UI, is that funded through ESAR funds?
So it, it was through ESAR funds and is through September with ESAR funds. And then the all-in funds have come in.
Right, okay, that's right.
To help, you know, and then, you know, I beg Dr. Birdsong and Cheryl Spive every once in a while if we have funding to increase by a couple here and there and, you know.
He doesn't beg. We willingly, that's right.
Once I, once I mention it, it is, anything that we can do to fund it, we fund more seats.
Okay, but are we going to be able to fund it at the same capacity that we have been with the ESAR funds?
We're, we're working on that and we're pretty positive of it.
I believe we will be able to do that.
We will be able to, okay. And we'll be able to sustain it till we see that progress, till we hit those targets.
That's our goal.
That's the goal, okay. And I know you'll come back to us and tell us, you know, exactly what, what you just said to Mr. Jordan, that you'll tell us what, what's needed if not.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Four point one, Dr. Paul.
All right. Yep, four point one. So four point one is a little longer in length because of the graphs and everything else and the amount of, of data that we're looking at. Four point one is a reminder of the community looks at our, our reading and mathematics gaps by subgroup and that we want to decrease those gaps to be no greater than ten percent by the twenty-seven, twenty-eight accreditation year is the overarching part of this goal. So measure four point one looks at reading. So it looks at reading STAR data, both the proficient level and the urgent intervention level. And the, the goal looks at our black subgroup going from thirty-nine point eight to fifty-two percent proficient, twenty point nine to thirty percent for our SWD, forty-one point three to fifty for SES, twenty-nine point six to thirty-five for EL and forty-six point five to fifty-four for Hispanic, which, which would then help our gaps because if they grow, we're comparing them to the non- gaps, except for the black subgroup, we compare to the white subgroup through this. So when we look at this data, we again see some red, but we do see one green box up there. But as we've talked about, we've still seen some growth in the scores. And as requested last time, and we made them a little smaller, so it's, it's, they fit better, but we have separated all of the graphs to make it a little bit easier to read because looking at on the screen last time, I realized how jumbled it was. I think we all did. We had a little headache afterwards, maybe. But you can see all the graphs are up here for you to see it visually as well instead of just in the chart format. And then we roll with the same thing with the urgent intervention gaps. And again, this one focuses on reading. So what does the data show us? The percentage of students in urgent intervention gap has decreased from fall to spring except for the EL gap group. So we did see decreases in our gaps except for in EL, even though we didn't meet our targets. Gaps that decreased their percentage of students in urgent intervention and met their target in the spring are non-SWD, non-SES, and the gaps between our black and white subgroups. Overall, from fall to spring, the percentage of students proficient has increased and the percentage of students in urgent intervention has decreased, again, except for our EL students. What's going well? The percentage of students proficient has increased from spring to spring for the black, white, SWD, non-SWD, SES, non-SES, non-EL, and non-Hispanic subgroups. So we saw the increases there. The EL students and non-EL students met their spring target in closing the gap. All gap groups increased their percentage of students except for, in proficient except for the EL students from winter to spring. The gap between black and white students has decreased from spring to spring and met the end-of-the-year gap goal. Although the gap between SES and non-SES remain the same, both subgroups decreased their percentage of students in the urgent intervention from fall to spring. So the gap stayed the same, but that's because their movement was the same. And although the gap between SWD and non-SWD increased, the percentage of students in urgent intervention for both groups decreased from the fall to spring as well. Couple of things that are not going well, the spread between all gap groups other than the EL minimally increased from both fall to spring and fall to winter. The gap between EL students and non-EL students increased from spring by twelve point eight percent. And none of the gap groups met their spring target for closing the gap except for the EL and non-EL students. So these previous action steps, the first one was around special ed education and EL specialists to engage in coaching training using Lexia. And all students, all schools participated with their EL teachers and sped teachers with the learning opportunities for this data coaching. Professional learning on the March PD Day on data, PD, on data-driven effective reading instruction. As a result of the March PD Day on data-driven effective reading instruction, walkthroughs indicated increase in students reading and annotating complex grade level texts, which is a, that's, I just want to highlight that for a second. That's an important thing when we're annotating and highlighting grade level texts because then we're even pushing our students that might be lower level readers into that grade level, which is, in the spring, it's very important to be on grade level texts. The Office of Learning Support continues to provide professional development to building level administrators and special education teachers on high-level leverage practices for students with disabilities and effective co-teaching models and specially-designed instructions. Again, all schools participated in the professional learning opportunities as well as we've done that at a couple of principals' meetings related to high-level practices for students with disabilities. Our sped teachers also participated in strategic instructional model, writing strategies curriculum, and they paired up with our secondary language arts, or secondary English team in curriculum instruction to do this work. And there, there was strong participation, but the data shows the achievement gap persists for our students with disabilities. And we're working together, CNI and special education, to build and deliver more collaborative professional learning for teachers. And this intentional collaboration has already started at the vision level with both offices presenting to each other and working together to develop an even stronger plan. So we started that. When we started seeing this data trend not improve, what can we do even better to prepare going into next year? And then provide the additional opportunity for instructional time with attendance recovery. The English office consulted with school level teams and encouraged implementation of specific instructional resources, activities, and best practices when they were working on this because as we talked about before, this isn't just come and sit in school and you get your time back. It's come and get, sit in school and learn what you need to learn to get your time back. The, the schools are finalizing uploading their numbers of students and the data on the attendance recovery. So I don't have any specific hard data on that, but there was a lot going on across the division. It's just not all fully, it's getting, completely getting put into synergy now as we, as we close out the year. And then again, we're, we're staying with a common theme here on that support for VLA as we go into next year.
Okay, you heard the report? Oh, Ms. Basine?
Yeah, just, just so I make sure I'm understanding the data correctly, if we could go up to, starting with, I think this is the first one, yeah, page two, the table, the first table, yeah, that one. So one of the things that we talked about in, with the, with the gap data is that the performance of all subgroups of students will not decrease below the established baseline, right? And so for, for this particular, for the EL and non-EL, And so for this particular, for the EL and non-EL gap, we see a decline from winter to spring. And so that's how that gap.
Correct.
Right? So is that still?
So.
I mean, can you?
I want to be cautious on this, though, when we look at STAR results. And I believe we talked about this maybe when I did the winter update. STAR results for EL are tremendously different than SOL results for EL students. Because the access for L's assessment, there is a substitute test. There's, our L students, they need specific supports. And, you know, students in that 17.8%, they might be in the country for their first month and they're taking this assessment. And, you know, and that counts in this data, but it doesn't count for their SOL data necessarily. So that one gap group, this is, you know, when I look back at selecting the interim measures and looking at STAR for that, it's a tough one again, because we don't have another place to really look at it. But when we look at it here, it's tremendously different than what we'll see when we see final SOL results, because their access assessment can count as reading improvement. So that's a tough one. And I, you know, hindsight's 20/20, looking at what we could do there differently. And I think, Mr. Jordan, that alludes to your comment earlier about when we set measures. But SOLs will be a lot different when we look at our L data, which is why the, it's also wonky when you look at the setting of the gap and everything else, because the SOL gap is a lot different than the STAR gap.
Okay. And so I also, so thank you for that. So then moving on to page four, that table. So the gap between black and white students, again, we see a decline from winter to spring in both groups.
But remember, this is urgent intervention, so we want to see.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. No, and you know what? I made a note of that. And I, sorry. I looked at that first and then I even made a note here in my notes. Sorry, excuse that, but I just, yeah. Last, I appreciate the subgroup-specific, you know, strategies that you have here. And earlier, if you recall, I was asking, you know, how those strategies were specifically targeting the subgroups that weren't meeting the targets. This helps me understand that better, so I appreciate that. And so, and on that point, how, I guess if you could share a little bit how you know that the specific training and professional development is, you know, specific for these subgroups are leading to positive outcomes or progress among these groups?
So I am a believer that you don't know that for a few years. You know, you can't make a judgment in six months to a year on if an application works, whether it's professional development, whether it's software, whether it's curriculum. Implementation time is very important. And I think we're seeing that in some of our other items that we started using three years ago. Even UI tutors, when we started using them, we're seeing better results now with that. And even when we look at the PD that's going on now, I think a couple of years out, we'll be able to measure that. And now, and the other thing is, I'm always very cautious about change too quickly, and then you burn your teachers out. You know, if we say, we're going to do this and we're going to focus on A because it's the best thing in the world, and we say, well, it didn't work that last year, so now we're going to focus on Z. We have to be consistent and grow them in that area before we can really make that kind of a data call.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So with Lexia, which I believe you mentioned earlier, we've, we're going on our third year, or we've completed three years of using that software?
So we have completed three years. I'd say we've completed two solid years of implementation. The first year was, you know, coming out of the pandemic and shaky with everything. But we've just finished three years, so we are starting to do some data work on both Lexia and EdMenom to look at specific students and growth and to see the application of that software as we continue to use it. And then if we continue to use it, to be honest, if we don't see the results we want.
Okay. So these opportunities that are listed here for special education teachers and EL specialists, that has been ongoing for the last two, three years, right? Or is that new?
Some of this is new. So like the deep work that we've been doing with the high-leverage practices, the work that we've been doing with SIM, that SIM started last year and then grew this year. The high-leverage practices started this year as going into it. The more and more research we do and the more and more collaborating we do, the stronger we're getting at what we need to do to reach our subgroups better.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. I'm going to go back to where Ms. Bassin left off on, well, page two, but also page one. So our goal is really around closing gaps as measured by SOL results. What you and the administration have identified is that that STAR reading data is predictive of SOL results. And so at the top of the chart, we've identified targets by subgroup focused on STAR reading proficiency.
Correct.
Then in the chart, we're looking at gaps, not around SOLs, we're looking at gaps around STAR. Because it's your belief that if the gaps are closing at the STAR level, with the STAR assessment, then it will be predictive of what we're likely to see at the SOLs.
Correct.
So then, I had some of the same assessment as Ms. Bassin. I just want to make sure if this is correct. So even though our goal says that we don't see, we shouldn't see any decreases of the baseline, are you applying that same principle to the STAR reading, with the exception of what you just mentioned around L, as you are highlighting what's green and what's not?
So we've been focusing on gaps right now and while looking at growth across the board. And we haven't put red or green boxes over whether they've grown or not grown in the area. But you notice when we've highlighted the data, we've talked about different areas that have seen the growth or not seen the growth. So we're looking at both of them, but the highlights on this are specifically around the gap data.
Okay. I think, I think we might have a typo on one. So for, if we look at the EL, non-EL, spring target, we have EL at 35 and non-EL at 60, and then we have 35, and I think that should be 25. Is that correct? Or am I adding wrong?
Yes, and that, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
And that's been there all year.
Right, yeah, so we need to work on that. And then, the other thing that really struck out to me that I'd like you to give some comment on or commentary on, we look at SES and non-SES. So the SES group, in comparison of last year's spring results to our current spring results, grew by about 2.5. The non-SES grew by 19.6. Any thoughts on what is it that has the non-social economically, whatever it is, the non-low mod income group growing at 19% and the economically disadvantaged group at 2.5? What might be attributed to that?
So I haven't dug into the specifics with it, Mr. Jordan. But in the plans, one of the things is to dig into attendance versus the groups to see if there are any attendance differences. One will be to compare also when we look at the SOL data to see, you know, it's also possible that, you know, one subgroup took this test and like really took the test, and another subgroup was like, well, I know I'm taking an SOL test, this doesn't really count anything for me. And, you know, so those little things we have to check, and that's when we compare it with SOL scores. But I did notice that as well, is that, you know, that's why that gap grew is because we had a larger growth in non-SES, even though we saw growth with, with S, yeah, even though we saw growth with SES, the growth was much longer with, larger with our non-SES.
Yeah, I think I saw something similar in math, and so I think that's something we just need to.
So you can just bypass that question.
I won't ask it again, but that was pretty stark.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, thank you.
All right.
You can say it.
Dr. Paul, 4.2.
All right. So 4.2, in order to not take a lot of time, it's mirrored with 4.1. It's just talking about math data. And if the board would allow, not to read all the numbers again, I think we know all the numbers. But I would just like to highlight what the data show and a few other pieces from here. So except for EL, all other subgroups showed improvement in both percentage of students proficient and urgent intervention from spring to spring. All subgroups showed improvement in math proficiency between the winter and spring administrations. So we saw that bounce up like we like to, or bounce down for urgent, whatever it may be looking at. The gaps between our black and white subgroups and our Hispanic, non-Hispanic subgroups outpaced the target for percentage of proficient students in spring 23, 24. All other groups, subgroups fell below the target and all gaps did not meet the target for urgent intervention. What's going well? Our black and white subgroups and our Hispanic, non-Hispanic gaps were better than the spring targets for percentage of students proficient. Other than EL, all subgroups showed improvement, like we stated. All gaps either declined from winter to spring or increased minimally. And except for EL, the percentage of students in urgent intervention declined for all other groups from winter to spring this testing season. What's not going well? EL subgroup has a 10.1% decline in the percentage of students proficient from spring to spring. And this was similar to our reading and similar to SOL reasons as well. All gaps were short in the spring 23, 24 targets for urgent intervention. The proficiency gap between black, white, and SWD, non-SWD decreased from fall to spring. And similarly, the urgent intervention gap between black and Hispanic, non-Hispanic decreased from fall to spring of this year. Other than Hispanic, no other subgroups met the urgent intervention gap targets for the spring administration. And then some of the report back on the status of previous steps taken, we wanted to increase the intensity of data-driven small groups in math, utilizing EdMenom and Zern, which was the new software we talked about in the winter. Evidence-based intervention resources and based on classroom walkthroughs, it indicated a focus on data-driven small group instruction and math using those tools. Increased fidelity of usage with Zern's platform to support current math tier-one instruction in addition to EdMenom. We've seen an increased use of Zern. The data logins by an increase from five student logins from when we first started using it, which of course, but we've gone up to 63, 87. And I do want to comment, when we meet with Zern on a monthly basis now, they say that Norfolk is a model of implementation for Zern and use and why we're using it. So I just wanted to say thanks to the math team and the math teachers who have really, really enjoyed that program. And then you'll see teacher logins increase from one to 137 logins. But I think what's most important here is the average minutes per week on the platform increased from 18 minutes per week to 60 minutes per week. So we're starting to see a difference, and I think we'll continue to see that rise as we'll continue to see Zern in use next year alongside with EdMenom. Increase the math instructional walkthroughs focused on monitoring implementation of high-intensity tutoring models. Again, the walkthroughs included that data-driven small group instruction happening in math classrooms. Targeted coaching support, the math efforts supported evidence of over 200 school support visits implemented over, to offer targeted coaching support in math through team teaching and modeling of evidence-based practices. So our folks are not sitting on the 11th floor. I think you guys know that well by now, they are out and about, supporting our teachers. Coaching and monitoring tutors, implementation of evidence-based math instructional practices, including small group instruction. The math office supported, support focused on coaching and monitoring tutories, including the general education staff, long-term substitute teachers, and university instructors. Implementation of best practices, including small group instruction. So I just want to point out there, it wasn't just teacher support, it was everywhere that we could support to make sure that they had it. Provide RTI resources on targeted schools. And they provided resources to all schools based on district data as we look at the data, knowing what the schools might need, as well as school-based data for high-need schools. PD for effective RTI aligned to tier-one math instruction strategies. The math office provided replica RTIPD at building math leader meetings and math specialist meetings, so that they could take it back. And then we also shared that at principals' meetings, so they knew what to look for. Provide opportunity for instructional time, and this is similar to the last one. The math office, you know, provided consultation as requested on suggesting appropriate schedules for the attendance recovery tutoring. And then here, what are we going to do? It's different now because we're talking about math, but really looking at that professional learning to provide instructional coaching support to monitor to the implementation of 2023 math standards. So I'm going to pause here for a second. Not only do we have new English standards next year, we have new math standards next year. And what's different also is there was no crosswalk year. So the standards in the test will be new next year. So it's going to be a tough year. And specifically, when we look at elementary teachers who teach both math and English, they got double standards coming at them. So there's a lot of focus that we have to provide next year on this. The math office will facilitate the professional learning, excuse me, and provide coaching support to monitor the implementation of RTI based on small group instruction. Notice that's a continued push through both subject areas. And then the professional learning for implementation of Zern and EdMenom will continue, as well as the data use.
Thank you.
And that concludes all of them.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Is there any questions with 4.2? Mr. Jordan?
First, I'd just like to thank Dr. Birdsong for alerting us about the work that Norfolk Public Schools is doing with Zern. I was in a meeting with the state superintendent and she mentioned that and that, I thought she said that there were some districts that hadn't taken advantage of it. She was trying to encourage others to do so. So I was glad to hear from Dr. Birdsong and now from you even deeper about Norfolk being a model with that. So I appreciate that. Maybe you can pass it on to the state if you haven't already. The, I guess, going back to your last comment about the double whammy with the standards. In light of that, are there strategies or techniques or whatever the appropriate wording would be from an administration perspective, that you are considering, if possible, lessening the load on teachers in terms of, and principals in terms of some other things that they may be doing now that they could not do or someone else, central office can take over for them, so that they have more time and don't get overstressed in that regard?
So I think there's a couple of things I'd like to point out. One, we've really increased our regional collaboration and talked about regionally building curriculum and curriculum materials together, so that we don't have to, you know, all do the same work and repetitive. So other divisions that have adopted the same reading materials as us, we're working with them to create more materials. Mathematics, same thing, across the region, we've had more conversations. So that we can just provide our teachers with a skill. We're working to build our library in Canvas, so teachers can just go grab something to be able to use, you know, those learning objects a bit easier, making sure that EdMenom and Zern are well-aligned. We're very excited with how much our teachers do enjoy using Zern and our students enjoy using Zern. We're getting good feedback for the math part of it. But the bottom line is, we're also starting earlier, Mr. Jordan. So we, one of the things we're doing regionally is collaborating on a summer conference where five divisions in our region are each going to host one. They're all the same, so our teachers have different dates to go to. And we'll still get the professional development points for it, you know, no matter where they go, because we're working together to build that. When I mentioned earlier about the VLA requirements, we're looking at how can we ensure our teachers are, you know, if it's outside of the work hours, that they're compensated for that work outside of the work hours? Because it's, there are nine modules, and they say they take two to three hours. So that's, you know, that's a week's worth of work on its own, pretty much, outside. So looking at what we can do to support our teachers through it is what's most important. And, you know, we've been working on getting ahead. If you recall, even a couple of years ago, we talked. If you recall, even a couple of years ago, we talked about the letters training. You know, the letters training also works for the VLA training. So we were ahead of the ball on that one, too. Um, and, and just again, having the reading specialists in place to really work with our teachers, um, and, and with our students, because there are gonna be some different requirements for students, um, as we go forward, uh, based on vows results. So we're doing everything we can, um, which I'm a firm believer of taking what we can off their plate.
Thanks, appreciate that. I remember we had the conversation about the gap groups and, in particular, the comparison of the black-white gap group. I noticed that, at least on the, on the math side, that the, the white group is flat or maybe dropped by about a point on the, on the proficient piece. Should, should we have, um, as part of the, um, goals, should we have a goal for the white group so that it doesn't stay flat? Or we just, or is it just, over time, we think that around seventy-seven, seventy-six percent is about where it has always been? It just seems, you know, part of our intent has always been to push forward while also closing the gap. And I just, so we have something for black SWD listed above the chart, but we don't really have anything for the white group and.
So though I think the one we do, because if you, if you think about the actual goal, it says while not letting a group fall backwards.
Right, which I'm saying, right, which means it could stay flat.
It could stay flat.
Right, so I'm, I guess that's what I'm asking, uh, cause like in this particular case, the, uh, the black group grew by two point nine, the white group fell by point nine, and obviously the gap closed.
Right.
But should we be still pushing the, uh, the white group for, I don't, I don't know if we had a target for it, eighty, eighty-five, I don't know what number would be. I'm asking, should we have something for that, for that group?
Just because we don't have a goal set doesn't mean that we're not pushing.
Oh, no, I understand, right.
So I don't, I don't know, you know, I, one of the things I like to use a lot is if we have too many goals, we have no goals.
I agree with you on that.
So I, I, I think, you know, we have a robust amount here and we're covering math, we're covering reading, we're covering attendance, we're covering the advanced studies diploma, so looking at getting students into honors and AP level classes. We're covering a robust amount right now and, and I think just by concentrating on the data, we're also just, we're gonna see growth across the board just with what we're putting into place. I think it was Dr. Gabriel who said it last time I presented data, is that, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're on that cusp, we're seeing it. And, and I truly believe with what we have in place, we're, we're, we're doing best practices. We're, we're looking at evidence-based, we're looking at science-based, we're, we're really focused in the right areas and, and, and working hard at it.
And our goals are rigorous, they're not, they are extremely rigorous.
Now, I would ask in the context of, and on the chart, we're looking at the gap. We said we want, didn't want to see it fall, but I just, it just caught my attention as I was going through that.
Could stay flat.
It could stay flat and, and whether or not, I mean, which could be fine, but I just wanted to.
And remember, s- still, not, not that we're saying we're staying flat, but staying flat with the white subgroup is also staying above the
Yes.
benchmark.
I understand, yes, yeah. Okay. That is all I had on that. Thank you. Oh, I, not for you, but for all of us collectively. So when we were, had, when we've had discussions about the monitoring calendar and the goal of only having two monitoring reports at a session, this is why.
Why?
Right, because if we could have spread these monitoring reports out over work sessions, workshop, take stuff off the business agenda and focus on this, you don't end up with this four to six reports at one session that frankly, after a while, you, one, one loses focus. And so I just wanted to raise that again, why it's recommended that we might do two at a time and not, not four to six at a time.
Okay, note taken.
But we wanted to be sure that we provided the data, so there wouldn't be any concerns about the board not getting data.
I understand, I'm just saying we can, we just gotta, I think if we can figure out a way to map it out, it doesn't.
I agree.
The business meeting does not, whole bunch, as Mr. Clanton has said for a long time, a lot of stuff could be on consent. And if we, if we're gonna stay on our goal of trying to get to fifty percent of our time on student outcomes, that business meeting offers us an opportunity to have some restructuring where we could be doing more focus on students and less focus on other stuff. So I just wanted to raise that as we move forward.
Anyone else? Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, um, well, I'm glad Mr. Jordan brought up the monitoring calendar, because I did have a general question about that. Speaking of which, for the point that, um, Mr. Jordan just made, when can we expect to, and this is, when can we expect to get the monitoring calendar back for us to adopt, to formally adopt?
A calendar for next year?
Well, I think, I think we were, um, having the, the calendar go back and have it populated for, you know, populated out for the next five years, actually.
Madam Chair, I think you were looking at trying to do that as part of the retreat, have it done by then?
Oh, I don't, oh, yeah, they won't have, they won't have that information that early, would you?
No, I'm just saying just the, the cadence of the monitoring, not the data.
We're happy to take the lead on that, because we, we do feel like that is more of our work.
Oh, yes.
And the board.
And the administration knows when the data becomes available and all of that, so, yeah. And that, and, and maybe that, you know, wasn't, wasn't clear before, um, but.
I was just giving an example of how from a board perspective, we could restructure our meetings to get it, get it done, but ultimately, we do need your guidance in getting it done, so, but we, we need to get it done. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to have four to six on a work session.
Yeah, we agree.
Yeah, so, so to that, to that point, can we set a date for when that will be ready for adoption? So that everyone's clear on, um, what to expect?
Well, I know that, well, June twenty-sixth is just too soon.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
We're talking more around the retreat or even July seventeenth, I think we meet for.
If we can do it at the retreat, I think that'd be good.
That would be good, because we're resetting for the whole year.
Right.
Okay. Dr. Birdsong, does that sound?
We will make it happen, yeah.
Okay.
We're happy to take the lead on the monitoring calendar.
I, I did have one other item that I, I would like for the administration to take the lead on. And that is regarding, this is great that we're getting these monitoring pieces, but in regards to the strategic plan itself, um, and these annual goals, so we're about to finish the school year, when is that populated? So that not only we as board members have that information, but the public as a whole can see where we are fiscal year to year. When is that, when is that done?
So if you go to the website and go to the strategic plan site, each of the, each of the measures has a month when they're updated. And every year on that month is when that data gets updated, um, on the strategic plan website. So some of the data, like accreditation is Oc- October, I think, because that's when we get it. Some of the data is in August. So, you know, August, September, October, November are busy, busy months of when we do a lot of strategic plan reporting. Once those are uploaded to the board, um, as, as, as documents for the board to review, our media team updates our website immediately after. So those are updated once the data is available and those months are stated out on the website directly.
So I wanted to, so we don't, are there any annual columns?
It's all annual, it's all annual on the strategic plan.
So based on the monitoring, I guess we were saying when we get the data in, and then that's when it's placed up there.
But I would say, I don't want us to confuse it. We are, we've set board goals, we're monitoring, those board goals around student outcomes, that's what we're monitoring. To the extent that the administration provides or the board requests updates on the strategic plan, that's a different thing than what we're doing here. And I don't, I just want us to avoid that confusion that we don't think that the cadence that we're talking about with our student outcomes monitoring is somehow tied to the strategic plan monitoring. That's, in my view, that's still more of what the administration is doing day-to-day. And this is what we've asked the administration to focus on, as we said earlier. Otherwise, almost like having the schools in the report, if we get back to focusing on everything, we're in essence focusing on nothing.
Understand. So with the monitoring calendar, we'll focus on the board goals.
But the dashboard for the, for the strategic plan, I think is, is.
Sounds good.
And if, before I leave the, the podium, I would just, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Bruce Brady and his team, Glenda Walter and her team, Kelly Sito and her team, uh, and, and absolutely ARA for all the data work they do and, and with the reporting. Some awesome folks around the division, so just wanted to thank them and thank you guys for the time tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Alright, we're gonna move on to somewhere. Four point oh three, thank you. Lost my agenda for a second. Uh, that, that'll be fine, once we cover, because I know we have to, um, approve the Title I, so. Come on up, Ms. Kelly Sito. Right, yeah. Whenever you're ready.
We're ready? Okay, wonderful. Good evening, uh, School Board Chair Moore Buffalo, Dr. Birdsong, school board members. This evening, I will be presenting a summary of the preliminary Title I Part A application for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. The purpose of the Title I grant is to provide supplemental resources to schools in order to assist students in meeting academic standards. Title I funds are used to support early intervention with our preschool three-year-old program. Strategic intervention is provided at all Title I schools to support students. Much of this is achieved through collaboration across all departments, schools, families, the community, on the use of funds and through professional development for staff, activities, events, and feedback opportunities. The proposed application supports twenty-six Title I schools. This is a decrease from twenty-seven because of the removal of Camp Allen as a Title I designated school. All schools will implement a school-wide program so that all students can receive the supplemental supports and resources. Title I Part A supports mostly staffing. However, there are supplemental funds at the school level that principals can use to support their school's improvement plan. Two example of division-wide use of supplemental funds are the kindergarten readiness kits and the kindergarten registration books that are provided to families. Virginia Department of Education shared with all divisions to use level funding for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Therefore, preliminary funding is sixteen million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Title I funds are used in direct support of Title I schools to meet the needs of students, families, and the community. As this slide shows, ninety-four percent of the funds in this application are in direct support of schools through school-level allocations and initiatives such as instructional coaches, family engagement, and support for students in transition. Furthermore, in the proposed Title I application, school-level budgets are maintained at level funds with some having slight increases. With principals and executive directors, it was decided all schools will have Title I teachers to support intervention and Title I family engagement specialists to support Title I measurable objectives at a minimum. Family engagement is a required set aside. Thank you so much, and I'm available for any questions.
School board members, you've heard the presentation, are there any questions, Mr. Clanton?
Did any of our schools transition out of being Title I for next school year?
Camp Allen.
Camp Allen, and so I missed, I'm sorry, I was in the restroom there.
It's noted, yeah.
And, um, and that's due, I'm sorry.
Sure, um, that is due to, um, we had a decrease in our Title I funding from sixteen point eight million to sixteen point one million. So that is pretty significant with close to a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction in the grant.
And so, um, staffing-wise, they would lose what, the parent engagement or?
They will lose a Title I teacher for intervention and a family engagement specialist.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Sito. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, I always yield, so.
Well, I was doing the same thing, but, because I feel like I've been asking a lot of questions.
No, no, you're fine. You are fine.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
So I, I, um, I sent some questions and I'm comfortable with, if I can get email responses, I don't wanna have to go through all those. But at a, at a more, um, high level, so on the measurable objectives, um, you know, we were, had a conversation earlier about the GAC doing SMART goals and we just went through all this monitoring. I was trying to really see if there's somewhere in here to see, based upon last year's measurable objectives, what the actual results were. And then how those results then impacted the recommendation for the measurable objectives this year. Is that some, I didn't, I couldn't find it in the plan, I didn't see it in the chart, is that?
Yes, so what we do is, um, because right now when we present the Title I application, the standards of learning of data is preliminary.
Right.
Therefore, um, in the fall and throughout the year, we utilize the data when it's verified for the standards of learning and we look at it, um, alongside ARA and school leadership development and we look to see, um, where the Title I schools as a whole, because as you see, the measurable objectives are related to all of the schools that are designated at that time. And we has, it's from pre-K through our one high school, which is Booker T. Washington. And then we use that data with our division-wide committee that includes families, community members, um, to look at the measurable objectives and along with, of course, our strategic plan for the division. So you'll see, um, direct alignment to our strategic plan, um, and the community input on the Title I application measurable objectives.
So they're kind of, kind of similar to what I was asking Dr. Paul during the monitoring report. So for example, last year, there was a measurable objective around SLO pass rates for black subgroup, economic disadvantaged subgroup, and students with disabilities would increase by four percentage points in Title I schools. And then this application, it changes to three. So is there some, is it, I guess, one, there's the, there's the grouping of the three subgroups together and coming up with the four. Then there's the grouping of the subgroups and coming up with three. But I guess I'm trying to get a sense of what may have triggered the, the shift from the four to the three, for example?
Yes, so with that, we align to the strategic plan measurements along with what we saw in the data when we actually had the verified standards of learning data. And did we see, um, growth in, um, the all group for Title I? And then did we see it for those particular subgroups? So our role is supplemental, so we supplement the work of the, the division, so we want to ensure that we're in alignment.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was really trying to get a understanding of the, we've got the, well, may I ask it another way? So the, we have several schools that are under the comprehensive school improvement targeting with ESSA and all of that. I think it was fifteen, that's for some reason, I think it's, I think it was fifteen. Is there some way that, what those schools that are under the ESSA targeting or school improvement, are they in any way given particular focus as part of this application?
So we work very closely with school leadership development around the comprehensive school, um, support plans. And there's Title I built directly into the comprehensive school improvement plans. So we're able to see right away in their strategic action steps, where they're utilizing their funding and which measurable objectives on the Title I application, which then aligns with our strategic plan.
So when you all have this community group later in the year, will, will you have populated all of that? What, what it was and what it, what it's showing?
Yes, and we, we meet with them actually more than, um, once during the year. We meet with them multiple times throughout the year to ensure that we're getting feedback on the holistic program that we provide.
And then I think my last question for now, you, there were two, um, measurable objectives that were added, um, in comparison to last year. One around, uh, chronically absent students and one around. one around referrals for disruption. And in the chronically absent, the measure is, compares 17.4% for 2324, and then the goal is getting to 16.3%, but it's for a school year 2526. Is that intentional, that it was spanned over two years?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that was a discussion once again in terms of ensuring that we use the real-time data to then support making that decision. So yes, it was purposeful to make it a two-year.
And then on the second one, can you just kind of brief us again on the, the disruption piece in the S-Bar report, what, what that is and what you're looking at?
Yes, so all of school, all school divisions in the state of Virginia are required to do the S-Bar report. We're in discipline. And once again, we're aligning with what we've seen in our strategic plan and focus areas across the departments, so then we can supplementally support. So we work very closely with student support services around behavior. And so the Virginia Department of Education, we've always had attendance and behavior built into the Title I application under the evidence-based strategies. This year, it was requested because it is such a focus for our division that we put a measurable objective around it, and our group was in agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Oh, Dr. Bussin.
No, I'll let Ms. Bussin go first, Al. I wanted to respond to something Mr. Jordan said.
Yeah, so go ahead, please.
Just to be fair to Dr. Sito, so you sent questions yesterday afternoon, we didn't get them until this morning because both Dr. Poll and I were on professional leave yesterday, so she may not even have the questions at this point. So if it appears that she wasn't prepared to answer them, it was because she likely hasn't received them yet.
No, just, and just so I'm clear, I didn't, I wasn't sending them to her, and I didn't, and I did not go through all those questions because of that, and that's why I was saying that if you have time later to, or someone has time to review them...
Do you feel that she didn't answer them?
Well, I didn't, I didn't go through them all, but I just, I just, I guess my main point was, so we're gonna get better because we said we're gonna work on this two-week thing?
Yes.
So we had, so we had the same thing, so we get it on Friday, and then as soon as I could get to it and review it and the product, I really was just trying to provide you all with an advance notice, because I don't think every question has to be done in this setting. So I just wanted to let you know the questions that I had, and I just wanted to ask whenever you, if, if we didn't touch on them here, if there's, when you have a moment, if you can respond to them, that was what I was saying. It wasn't trying to anyway say that somebody had gotten something and didn't respond to it.
Ms. Bussin?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sito. And, you know, some of what I was, wanted to ask about, I think, was addressed in your response to Mr. Jordan's question, and I think I unders, understand, well, I want to be sure I understand the response. So one of my questions was about how well we're, we implemented the plan and how we, since we're asked to approve it, can see how well we have implemented it and then going forward. And if I heard you correctly, it's, is it populated someplace where we can access it or...
So our data is aligned with the data that ARA is doing with, you know, that Dr. Poll also shares, and then what we do is with ARA, I look at the data specifically for the number of Title I schools and then do the breakdown based upon the measurable objectives. And then we work, I work very closely with school leadership development around the comprehensive school support plans, which have the action steps that align to the measurable objectives and the strategic plan. So we're actually keeping track all year long on how the application, the, what we're expected to be doing and the resources we're using and the impact that it's having, because we work very collaboratively with the schools to align it with their improvement process based upon their data. And they get their school-level allocations too, to utilize for staffing and for resources that they need supplementally to what the division is already providing. And that's reviewed by myself and school leadership development.
Okay, I think I, I think I understand. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to 4.04, School Board's Operating Budget for F...
Now we got more.
Title II, III, and IV. Oh. Oh, Ms. Kelly.
This one presentation. No, it's not, it's not, Mr. Brady.
There's a whole lot of folk.
It is.
I think I saw the light drain out of me for a moment. Three more presentations.
All right, good evening.
Evening.
Madam Chair, Ms. Buffalo, School Board Members, and Dr. Bert Song. I'm joined this evening, to my right, by Mr. Zach Newman, who is our Senior Coordinator of World Languages and ESL. He's joining me this evening to provide an overview of the 2024-25 Title II, Title III, and Title IV grant applications for your review and consideration. These three grants provide funding to supplement positions and programs in NPS with the goal of increasing student achievement. The Title II Part A grant, often identified as TPT for Teacher-Principal Training, provides support for professional development to improve the quality of instruction and enhance effective principal leadership to increase student achievement. The application is for slightly over $1.4 million, which does reflect a reduction in funding of over $400,000. Under federal regulations, private schools in the city of Norfolk who wish to participate in this federal grant program receive a portion of the funds, with private schools expected to receive over $120,000 in the coming school year. This slide shows the personnel positions involved in delivering professional development that are funded by Title II. The positions include six reading and math specialists in schools, our core content office teacher specialists, response to intervention specialists, the division's professional development teacher specialist who supports new teachers and assists with the new teacher mentor program, and a division-level instructional coach. There are no new positions on Title II. On this slide is a listing of professional development activities for teachers and principals supported by Title II. Among these are funds to support professional development for the STEAM program at Booker T. Washington High School, support for AP teachers to participate in a new program from the College Board to mentor AP teachers, support for provisionally licensed teachers to prepare for the praxis, as well as professional development opportunities for principals and teachers. Moving on to Title III, this grant provides funding to support the academic achievement of our English learners while working to become proficient in English and assist general content teachers in becoming more effective with their teaching of L's students. The award is over $160,000. On this slide, you can see the Title II funds support the ESL teacher specialist, professional development software for all teachers, and professional development for ESL teachers so they can better support teachers and principals. Finally, Title IV Part A provides funding for a well-rounded education, a safe and healthy environment, and the effective use of technology. The Title IV award is over $1.3 million, with the private schools receiving over $65,000. This slide shows several positions that are supported by Title IV funds, and that includes a new position of a bilingual family engagement specialist for the new ESL Welcome Center. Programs supported by Title IV include AP exam fees and test prep materials, PSAT exams, SAT School Day, anti-bullying and suicide prevention materials, the vector reporting system, and funds to support FEV tutors. This concludes our presentation, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have about these three title grants.
Board members, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Bussin?
Thank you, Dr. Brady. So there are funds available through this grant to prepare our provisionally licensed teachers for the praxis, correct, right? And what about our paraprofessionals? So I saw that, I think I saw in the application that they have a prep for the parapro, but do we pay for them to take the parapro?
We can provide that assistance for them, yes.
Okay, because, yeah, I have, I have heard that feedback, you know, from, so I just wanted to share that. And then on Slide seven, in alignment with, you know, improving school conditions for a safe and healthy environment, and then if you go to Slide eight, I was, I was wondering, it didn't occur to me so recently, but we used to have a Safe Routes to School coordinator or, right, and isn't that correct? And we haven't had that position in a, I think in a couple of years, if I'm not mistaken.
And that position wasn't in a title grant?
It wasn't in a title grant?
No, that was a position that was grant-funded by the state.
Okay.
And the position was actually in the Health and PE Department.
Okay, so not through...
Yes, yeah.
The Title II, okay.
I believe the, they are not providing that funding at this time.
Okay. Yes, my question is, where, if they're not providing the funding for it, where could it fall? As we're seeing, it just seems that we're seeing a lot more children walking and biking to school, and we know we've had some, you know, safety concerns with that, so I was just curious where, where that position might come into play.
I think, and I could be wrong, that the city somehow is, is funding that or someone in that role. That's what I recall. We could definitely double-check on that, but...
It does seem like a good position to partner with them on, but yeah, I was just curious.
I'm pretty certain, but...
Mr. Clanton? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to verify, I'm seeing right here on Slide eight, STEAM curriculum materials, is that for the STEAM program at Booker T.?
Yes, it is. Yes, we put money aside there to help support them if they find, you know, looking for instructional materials, you know, whatever they need as we move into the first year of that program to, to provide the support that's needed.
The first year is this fall.
Yes.
Correct. And so I hear curriculum, professional development for staff on another slide, so...
Yes, on the Title II.
And now I see on the Title IV, actual materials to support the program. Thank you.
I think the teachers are actually being trained this week. A retreat.
They did a retreat today, tomorrow, Friday.
Great, I look forward to hearing more about that on the 26th.
Professional development.
So STEAM will.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
So on the, in the application where it's, there's, there are measurable goals around licensed teachers, where, I guess, district-wide, where we are in terms of having, I don't know the exact language, but...
Properly licensed and endorsed teachers.
Thank you.
Throughout the application.
Right. So there's, there's a measurable goal that addresses, I believe, trying to get to 90%?
Yes.
And then later on in the application, there's a description of hard-to-staff schools and some efforts that are going to be made around the same effort of getting those, what Ms. Bussin said, teachers into those schools. Can you just speak to what the measurable objective says and what the recommendation is and how those things line up?
So the measurable objective comes directly from the strategic plan, and we get the, the data from the IPAL report. Later on in the Title II application, where it does talk about several schools and their level or percentage of properly endorsed and licensed teachers, those are schools that are being tracked throughout a number of Title II grants now, and, and so we report on them annually as to where, where they are at. And most of them, in, in most of those schools in the report are actually higher than the division level of properly licensed and endorsed teachers.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. So in the teacher quality section, under equitable distribution of qualified, experienced, and effective teachers, it does note that the division's percentage of properly licensed and endorsed teachers declined from 89.2% in 2223 to 84.3% in 2324. It describes this decline was reflected in the percent of properly licensed and endorsed teachers at, at our hard-to-staff schools. Then it mentions some of the schools that saw declines, and then the recommendation of the strategy includes to support these schools in increasing their properly licensed and endorsed teachers. Staff will receive building-level and district-level mentors, evidence-based professional development on instructional strategies, classroom organization, management protocols, and so forth. These schools will also receive additional incentives in the form of supplies and materials. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding, are the resources being used to provide for the fact that the gap exists, or is there, I thought I had read something where, where the division may be prioritizing placing teachers in these schools that you've identified before you placed them otherwise? Did I misread that?
I think I saw that.
Or is it the intention to do that?
I, I think our intention is to provide our hard-to-support, our hard-to-staff schools with the teachers that they need. The Title II grant plays a role in supporting those teachers.
Training, right.
We retain them. And so the teacher specialists that are supported by the funding, our RTI specialists that are supported by the funding, their frequency in visiting those schools and supporting those teachers is more than you would find with their visitation in, in other schools. So we target those schools for a higher degree of support and those teachers so that we can retain them, and so then they don't become, you know, hard-to-staff schools, you know, in the future.
I mean, everyone knows, if, if it was the intent to close the gap by giving those schools priority, I mean, I would celebrate. I just, I just wasn't sure if I was reading that that was what was going to be done or not, and I, is that, is that something that is being considered as part of this effort, or am I, or is it just the, the support piece in the, in light of the, the gap that exists? I mean, you don't have to tell me now, I just, I'll go back and reread again if I can find it, I'll send it to you, but I was just trying to get clear if we were now saying as part of these title applications that we see these schools that have these gaps and that as an operational solution, we're going to prioritize making sure that these schools that, these hard-to-staff schools that have these vacancy gaps, that we're going to prioritize and use resources to place highly, whatever, teachers there first? And that's why I was trying to figure out if that 90% was specific to title schools or if the 90% was overall, and you described that's the overall.
Yeah, the 90% in the measurable objective is overall for the division, yes.
I may follow for a question of clarity later.
And I'm glad you said that, because I did make a note, because it does mention strategic staffing, and so I interpreted it the same way, but, yeah.
Anyone else? Oh, that's it. Mr. Brady, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're going to 4.04, School Board's Operating Budget, FY 2425, and... And, oh, well, I do want to say that the Title I applications will be on the June 26 agenda for vote.
Hello, Ms. By.
Good afternoon, Chair Buffalo and members of the school board and Dr. Birdsong.
Now, where you?
On the presentation, yes, thank you. Very good, thank you. On February 7th of this year, Dr. Birdsong presented a budget to you. You adopted a budget on March 20th. The budget was sent to the city manager's office to be considered by city council. City council adopted its budget on May 14th. I'm bringing to you this afternoon a recommended amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget based on city council action. The, the city funding that was in the proposed budget based on the estimates that the city had given us in November was 62.28 million. When the city adopted their budget, their revenue estimates had increased, and, and with the revenue funding formula, that increased the amounts to be budgeted for Norfolk Public Schools by 1.96 million. We are recommending that, that the budget be amended to increase the budget by this amount, and, and we would also recommend that these funds be used for contracted services for our students with disabilities, because those costs continue to rise, and, and they are, you know, over, you know, the, the costs themselves are more than what we have budgeted. Looking at the fund, you can see in, in total, the general fund budget that, that was originally approved was 447 million, and we add that 1.9 million to that, that increases the budget to 449 million. Everything else staying the same. They, after the city adopted their budget, and not until May 29th, we received the Virginia CUP tool, which is based on the state's adopted biennial budget. We were very fortunate that the changes that were made focus largely on at-risk funding, and said that our funding increased significantly more than, than we expected, you know, because of those changes. And, and if you recall, the, the budget that Dr. Birdsong brought you earlier this year had little, yeah, you know, very little increase from the state funding. So, I mean, you said this is, is funding that, that came with the revisions in the state budget. Listed here, you show, show the changes with at-risk funding being 21.18 million, payments in lieu of food and hygiene tax, an additional 5.9 million. There is a compensation supplement. If you recall, there was not a, there was a bonus supplement, but not a compensation supplement in the governor's budget, the governor's proposed budget, so there did come out to be a compensation supplement of 4.12 million. And then there were some deductions. They, the state eliminated the prevention intervention and remediation program, which was a reduction of 6 million. They did roll that, roll that program into at-risk, so the services that were provided with the PIME, yeah, are, are rolled into the at-risk funding. The, they reduced our basic aid, eliminated the bonus payment that was in the governor's proposed budget, reduced our sales tax, and reduced the contribution to VRS. And, and then there were a few other changes that netted at 0.6 million dollars addition. We, since we, you know, didn't receive that, you know, the, I mean, the CUP tool wasn't prepared and distributed until May 29th, we are planning to provide a plan for spending those funds in July. But, so in the, you know, we do need to have a budget adopted by July 1st so that, you know, we can continue operations. So we are, for today's action, we're recommending that. Okay. No, went backwards, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll, I'll just talk, I will, I will talk to it.
[laughing]
We're recommending that we adopt the budget that the, that the city adopted, which has the increased funding from the city. And, and that total budget, including all funds, is 673,595,000 dollars.
I, I have one question. The contract services, is, is that around Dr. Birdsong staffing, or?
It is. It's around OT services, PT services, transportation, yes.
Yep, that's what I, okay, thank you. Ms. Clanton, you have a question?
So, so, thank you. We have this in front of us here today. We're gonna, the request of the board is to adopt the budget that city's done. So 17.9, almost 18 million dollars, and I'm seeing in July, so is this going to be an amendment to the budget that we'll have to come back in? Because we have to still accept it from the, and then it's got to go back to city and all that stuff.
Yes, it will, yes.
All right. And we'll have a plan that goes along with it?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
So. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bassin.
Do you?
No, 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 I just wanted clarification, but.
Oh, okay. So I want to piggyback on a question Ms. Buffalo asked about the contracted services for students with disabilities. So we're increasing, if I think I heard you correctly, we're increasing the amount because the cost of what we currently have has gone up, not that we're expanding the capacity.
Those, those costs of, of, the cost of the services continue to, to increase.
Okay, and I guess I'm, I'm also thinking about the data, you know, that we just reviewed and, you know, for targeted supports, additional, you know, targeted supports for our students with disabilities, are we meeting the, are we meeting the need with the funds that we are, are getting through this contract?
What, what we're doing is we are, are spending funds in that area that, that exceed what we budgeted in that area, and, you know, and the budget's still fine, you know, still fine overall, but this is, you know, to make sure we're providing adequate funding in, in that area. Without, without having to transfer funds.
Right, okay. Have a question, Ms. Jordan.
All right, and?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
So, and then going back to slide two, I think, where we're talking about the revenue increase of 1.9 million or almost 2 million. So that, the original estimate was based on estimates that we received in November.
Right.
And so throughout the years, we get closer to the budget. Don't we get estimates again at another point in time before?
The, the estimates did not change.
Okay.
Until the time the budget was presented to city council.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Ms. Bassin? I'm sorry. I just wanted to hand up, that's fine.
Ms. Doe?
Just a clarification for myself, so the costs of the services are going up because the administration is doing everything they can to meet all the need that is there, or that the services that were already in place are just costing more? I, I guess those mean two different things to me, I'm just confused.
There's some need, there's definitely an, an increased need for additional services.
Sure.
I know that for certain, because I know this year, because of staffing shortages, we had to utilize contract services for, like, OT and PT, and therefore, in thinking about what we experienced this year, there's no way that if, if we continue with staffing trends, and I'm not saying that we will, we're hopeful that we won't, but in the event, we do, we will need this funding to support that. It will be through a transfer or something, because our children with disabilities will not go without. So I'm, I'm just trying to be a little more proactive. We have the additional funding, and I would like to put it towards our children with disabilities and the services that they need, and trying to be proactive in the event that we don't get the staffing that we need.
There, yeah. Follow up on that, I remember in a previous presentation that one of the costs that was going up was transportation for, I believe, public.
McKinney-Bentham.
Okay, is that one of the things that will be helps with this, or is that something completely separate?
That is separate.
Okay.
That's separate.
It is.
Maybe, maybe this was just saying, I just want to, I'm still struggling with it a little bit. So the, the revenue increase in the recommendation around the contract services, we're, we're not treating that as a one-time thing, it's just something that we're building into the budget moving forward.
That's right.
And this would be that initial increase based upon this regional revenue increase. You know, I probably didn't get my other email, but, so what I'm, what I continue to struggle with is, so I personally think, and I just didn't have time to figure it out on my own, that since the board led the effort to move to a revenue sharing model and the city responded, we could always use more, but that the revenue sharing agreement in the economy that we've been in for the last four or five years has produced increasing revenue to the, to the school system, which I think is a great thing, and I hope it continues. And then we've also had the scenario where we end up with significant unexpendant fund balances when it comes to us being able to spend what we received or what we projected. And so when we end up, in the end of the year, I guess what you're about ready to do over the summer again, and we have to make these one-time decisions, I know, you know, we, you know, we did recommendations where a lot of, you know, football fields and all kinds of stuff, so all good things and needed. I guess I'm just, and then we have this additional state action. So, I guess I, I make, I still want to make sure that, and as we do whatever we're going to do today, and as we look at what we have in July, and I know that the chair is already encouraging us to have budget discussions much earlier this year, that, that we're putting as much resources as we can into the classroom, and almost as we were just having the conversation around the, the title reports, we still have these disparities in terms of who's in the classroom and how the schools are, are resourced. So I'm, I'm glad we have a problem like this to solve.
Absolutely, not the reverse.
But, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding how we go through the process, and, and in the future, when we end up with more than we expected, how we are prioritizing where that, where that money goes. But, but the 1.96 million is a result of the revenue sharing, it's not a one-time thing, it's something that gets built into the budget, it's to provide contract services for students with disabilities, that the costs are going up, but not, we don't necessarily know it's a efficiency, it's just, it's a cost thing.
Did I hear a mixture?
Both, a little bit of, more of both, just because of staffing.
Okay.
For example, this year, we weren't able to fill a lot of those positions, so we had to contract those services out, and so we're anticipating having to do that.
Okay, so like on the, on the personnel report we saw earlier, we are seeing more and more of these staff persons, so we are shifting to contract the services to try to?
And I wouldn't even say necessarily shifting, because it is a priority to get these positions filled.
Right.
But in the event that we don't, we still need to provide those services to our children.
Oh, yeah, no, I, no, no question about that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Clanton, how does he answer?
No, I'm just, yeah.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to make, want to be clear.
You want to be clear, because I also wanted to ensure
Right.
that the other recommendation or action of the board is that we're going to get this report in July regarding the 17.99 million, I think it just needs to be recorded that that's also coming, and that we're going to receive a report from the administration.
And it's in the PowerPoint as well.
I understand, but for the record, that it's, that it's there. And I think that speaks to some of the items that Mr. Jordan and others, and also that as we go through the process of the right sizing about school buildings and all the other discussions, that, that will lead us into the opportunity to really talk about how we can have some operational savings moving forward, and then definitely going back to, you know, administration company, what's in these other things where we can move those funds and not have these large sums of money left over every year.
Yeah, I agree with you.
That solves much of that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I agree with you, I just, I just think we have to be careful not to complicate it, because we are, we have no plans on the table to close anything anytime soon.
No, 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 I didn't say that.
No, no, I'm not saying you are, no, I'm not saying you are, but I think we keep having this discussion around, or I was in a city league meeting yesterday, and somebody was talking about it, because they had heard about this, and I just think we have to be careful. The, the, the division is going to lead this, we're going to have these discussions, but I think we have to be careful about what we are projecting these savings are going to be until we actually crunch numbers, because I just think we just need to be careful that we don't get too far out in front in setting one expectations around what we're going to do, because we don't know that yet, and then what the savings are going to be, because just like the costs in these services are constantly going up, and we can project one thing, and then economic reality tells us something different, so.
Are you going to state a motion, Madam Chair?
Well, I just want to be clear on what, are we, Dr. Birdsong, a motion on the total 673 million, or just to re, okay?
The school board's budget of 1, yeah, 164.24 million.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yes, that was just operating, yes.
Yeah, 673.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, to include the grants and everything else.
Right.
All right, so Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to move that we adopt the fiscal 2025 budget as presented at this June 12, 2024 meeting for a total of 673,595,199 dollars.
I have a second.
Second. Any discussion? I just, I just want to make clear that my concerns remain from, from my previous vote, so I'll be voting in alignment with that.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Nay.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Stone?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
We should pass three, two.
Thank you, Ms. By. Thank you, board members, for being patient today as we have a lot of business and things to get through. So thank you for your patience. We will meet again Wednesday, June 26 for our business meeting. And with nothing, no more business, this meeting is adjourned.